Well, good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock, and at this time, we will welcome up Pastor Eastwood for the invocation, and as he comes, we will have a couple of celebrations with retirements. We do want to make a note that today is our county manager's birthday today, so happy birthday. But we do have some individuals that we definitely want to keep in mind. We want to keep Ms. Charlotte Robinson and her family in our thoughts. Actually, Ms. Robinson Pastor, you work with the Board of Commissioners, and we just want to include their family, her family, in our thoughts. And then, of course, Pastor, if you will continue to pray for this world, this nation, this state regarding the coronavirus as well. So blessings to you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've allowed us to arise and be a part of already. The Scripture says, "This is a day that you have made, and we are told to rejoice and be glad in it." This dear lady has gone on to be in your presence, Ms. Charlotte Robinson. We pray that you would comfort the family today, and may they be able to rejoice, Lord, that she is in your presence. To be absent is to be present, the Scripture says. And Lord Paul said that it's better, as we live this life, it's gain but to go into the presence of the Lord. He says, "That's the real gain that we make in the sight of eternity." We also want to thank you, Lord, for our public servants here today, and all that they do to cause our county to be safe, and we thank you for all those that's involved in the decision-making and making the plans for our county, Lord. We just pray to give them strength, give them wisdom, and may they seek your precious will, perfect will, on earth, as it is in heaven, in all the decisions. And then, Lord, all of those that come up and have anything to say today, may they prayerfully speak, as the Holy Spirit leads them, Lord. And you said, "Where two or more are gathered together, you are there to own and to bless." And, Lord, the power of your word, the power of your Holy Spirit, which lives in the life of a believer, and the power of your gospel, Lord, and your movement in our life is born against saints of God, Lord, is the most powerful weapon we have against what Satan would do in the lives of people. So, Lord, bless this meeting today. Thank you for braining each and every person in here safely, and may they use the wisdom from on high, the very oracles of deity. May they use that wisdom in the decisions they all have a part in making today. And, Lord, as they go home, may we remember that we are to reflect your love, your compassion, your power in our life, Lord, as we deal with others, and as we deal in love and have the compassion that you give us through knowing Christ as our personal Lord and Savior is one of the most useful and powerful things we can do with people. So, Lord, this is your day, and, Lord, we're rejoicing that we're able to get up and be here. And, Lord, we are satisfied and glad for the opportunity. So, Lord, you just work and deal in all that's said and done today, and we give you the praise and the honor and the glory, for we say this in the precious name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, and all of God's people said, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any end, just for all our own.
Well, good morning again, and we welcome everyone to today's meeting. We are now calling this meeting to order. At this time, we do have some public hearings that were advertised for this meeting but have postponed, so we'll read those, and then we'll take a motion and vote for each of these items separately, and then, of course, we'll identify if there are any other changes or revisions to the agenda. The very first public hearing is the countywide amendment to multiple sections of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code requesting small-box discount stores, vape shots, and personal service establishments, and for other purposes. So is there a motion to remove that from the agenda?
It's a move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that item has been postponed or withdrawn. The next item is also a public hearing in District 5, and it was with Net Systems appealing the administrative denial of small-sale technology adjacent to residential zone property for facility located within a public right-of-way in the vicinity of 512 Valley Hill Road. So we have that. Is there a motion to withdraw that one from the agenda?
It's a move.
We have a motion?
Suck.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, here are none. Any other changes to the agenda? I'm looking at the county manager. I thought there was one agenda item that was on the agenda that is going to be covered in the county manager's comment.
That is correct. Thank you, Chair Wood. We do need to remove the item for discussion only regarding the Henry County Wrecker Service Policy.
Okay, that was item 12A, and it was a Henry County Wrecker Service Policy for Discussion Only that is now being removed from the agenda. I understand it's going to be covered in the county manager's comments?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have that item. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Call it again. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussions regarding that? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Any, none. Okay, so now we'll accept a motion to accept all of the changes to these agendas as just stated. So the floor is now open for a motion to accept all of the changes that have been noted.
It's a move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, well, we thank you. So at this time now, we will accept the agenda as it's been modified, as stated. We'll now invite up Mr. Brad Johnson, our Deputy County Manager, to recognize some employee retirements.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and good morning. This morning, we have two retirees be notified this morning, Mr. Marcus Johnson. I'm not sure if Mr. Johnson can make it. He has some issues come up. Not, was not sure. Just make sure he's not in attendance. And Mr. George Thornton, also known as Bruce to us. Bruce, if you can come on up. I asked Bruce, I told him if he could actually just go ahead and return back to work, because we decided not to approve the PA and have him go back to work this morning, because he's such a notarized person that we see around the county, and his community service crews actually going to building to building, doing their job, and doing what they do great every day. So he will definitely be missed at his retirement, since he told me it was fishing, was calling him this morning, that he knows it was time. So, but as with all of Team Henry, he played a vital part of the operations day-to-day of Henry County. We appreciate him, and want to thank him for that. And we do have his Years of Service Award for his 15 years with us, and just want to, again, give him our thanks and appreciate his service to the county and the citizens of Henry County.
All right. We're going to mic the board down to take a picture with Mr. Thornton, so thank you. We also want to recognize Mr. Johnson as well. So thank you again for your service, sir. So at this time now, we'll move into our next items regarding transportation presentations, and I understand we've got several, we're going to invite up Mr. Baker to come and introduce our guests for us this evening, this morning, I should say. But I understand we've got Ms. Rosalyn Tucker here from the Atlanta Regional Commissioner that will speak to us about the Georgia Commute Options, and of course, Mr. Baker will talk to us about the pedestrian safety plan, and then we'll invite up Mr. Salters regarding the Transit Master Plan. So we ask that you please come in that order, but we, of course, would love any introductions that you would have, so.
Good morning. You may recall, I came before you a month ago with four transportation planning proposals, and one of my proposals was that the Henry County Government consider travel demand reduction options. There is a Georgia Commute Options Program where the program organizers team up with employers to encourage people to reduce driving their single-occupant vehicles and consider alternate options to commute back and forth, and thus reduce demand on our road network. So today, this morning, we are pleased to have two guest speakers from the Atlanta Regional Commission. The first one is Rosalyn Tucker. She is the Chair of the Georgia Commute Options Program, and with her, we have Chris Sloan, and I would like to invite them to come to the podium and present the Georgia Commute Options and how we may potentially benefit from this program. Roz?
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Good morning to the Commission here. Thank you for having us. Thank you, Chair Wood. I'm Roz Tucker, and I'm the Managing Director of Mobility Services at ARC, and our task is really to help create solutions for commuters. I think everyone knows that congestion, mobility is an issue in the region, so I'm going to share briefly with you some of the things that we have in place, specifically talking about our commuter program called Georgia Commute Options. And what it does is it incentivizes individuals throughout the 20-county area, which includes Henry County, for utilizing a clean commute. And I'll talk about what a clean commute looks like. It could be, of course, carpooling, it could be vanpooling, using, utilizing transit where available, also walking and biking. And then there's a new form of commuting that has been added to our modes, which is teleworking. Teleworking actually is the fastest-growing commute mode across the country, actually up about 47 percent, and Casey's going to come talk about that. Going to try to move really quickly through the slides here. Go ahead. Other area? Okay, go in the right direction. This is an area that we covered. I talked about the 20-county area. We also have seven TMAs more inside the perimeter, but Georgia Commute Options covers everything outside of that territory and including the state and federal agencies inside of the Of course, everything that we do is governed by the Atlanta Region's plan. Some of you may be familiar with that. World-class infrastructure, our economy, and healthy, livable communities. So you might ask, what is transportation demand management? It's really the use of strategies to inform travelers to maximize the efficiency of a transportation system, which really leads to improved mobility, reduced congestion, and lower vehicle emissions. Also, not noted here, it actually impacts a better quality of life as well. When individuals have more time with their families, they're not spending as much time in their cars, there's just a better quality of life that comes from that. These are some strategies. I will not go through them all, but we put them in buckets in terms of TDM. If you ever want just a quick snippet of what it's all about, it's really categorized into these five buckets, one being the services that are provided, such as micro-transit, maybe the first mile, last mile, those kinds of things, car share, the Uber, Lyft, those kinds of things. Then there's the infrastructure that does have more to do with working collaboratively with local governments, et cetera, but several things are listed there. Then there's parking management, and then there are the subsidies, and that's really where the employer comes in. We provide incentives and the various rewards for utilizing a clean commute. And then, of course, there's the education to the community and assisting folks with finding a best route, trip planning, and those kinds of things. And so this deck is available. You could certainly feel free to take a look at this at your leisure. I'm going to breeze through this so that Casey can come with some data. Of course, it provides improved public health and safety and the other three points noted here in the deck. I do want to point out that we do outreach to over, currently, it's over 900 employers across the region, which makes up over 300,000 employees. And these are some of the things that we offer to work sites. Of course, we can do assessments using addresses and zip codes to sort of give a bird's-eye view of what your employee, your workforce commute is looking like, or those employers in your area. We're able to assist with that as well. We have Georgia Commute Schools. Schools have a similar problem with congestion around schools. And then we also offer regional modal promotions throughout the year, and these are just a few of them. One big event that we do is called Try Transit. We give folks an opportunity to try transit, get on board, and also our Telework Week that has been blessed by the Governor of Georgia for the last three years, so we're really excited about that. We'll be doing that again in November. And then we're really proud of our successful city and county partnerships, and these are some of the cities and counties that we've been able to assist. As you know, some of our county governments are some of the largest employers in the county, and we're able to go in and assist them with various items to help with congestion, whether it's parking, whether it's setting up a telework program, or whether it's just assessing their employee climate to see what the need is. This is just some of our campaigns around marketing. We also have ride matching and trip planning technology that's also very gamified, and folks can utilize the incentives based on where their address is. They could go to a restaurant, get a discount, and folks are really loving this, this launched January 1st of this year. And then, of course, if you want to scan that, that will take you directly to our app. I'm not going to take any more time, because Casey has some great data to share with you as well regarding our regional commuter survey. If you have any additional questions, feel free to reach out to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Roz. So this is a really long presentation. I'm going to go through it very quickly, but hopefully you have it at your disposal to look at as you can. But I'm just going to give you an overview of the regional commuter survey. This is done as part of our regional transportation demand management program. So this survey is done about every three to five years. It's done through the regional TDM program. The goals of this survey are to understand the commuting, travel patterns of employed people throughout the region. We want to understand their motivations and their barriers to using alternative modes. We want to understand their awareness and their usage of commute options programs, like the thing, you know, like what we offer through GCO. And then finally, we use this survey to establish some performance baselines for our program. In this past iteration of the survey, we actually used a random mailer, so we sent out these postcards to random houses throughout the region, and it led people to an online survey. At the end of the day, we got 5,100 total responses, which was, we were aiming for 5,000, so we got just above what we were aiming for. So I'm going to go and just do some very high-level results of this survey. I'll, at the end, there's a link to the website where we have the technical document and the public report, and I encourage you to go check them out there for a lot more in-depth coverage. So these are our home regions that we surveyed, and then the whole area is also divided up into work regions. This chart and this chart basically just show what you might expect is that people tend to live near where they work. And we found that actually when people make a change in either their home or their work location, the length of their commute was the number-one factor that came into play. We are showing that the average commute distance is about 19 miles, and that's taking people about 39 minutes to travel. That's one way. And, of course, that varies depending on where people live. With the outer counties, they tend to be a little bit longer. We saw that about, almost the whole region agrees that, and again, this is probably not a big shocker, but traffic congestion is a serious problem in the Atlanta region. Most people agree with that. And about a third of respondents said that they found their commute this year to be worse than it was in the year prior. So about a third of people are finding their commute to be getting worse. And again, that sentiment also varies depending on where people live. In terms of actual behavior, we're seeing that about 76 percent of weekly commute trips are done by driving alone, a single occupancy vehicle trip, with dependability being the number-one factor when people choose what mode they're going to take. But we did have about 35 percent of respondents took an alternative mode at some point throughout their week, and what you can see here is that in terms of the primary alternative modes that people are taking, telework has been on the rise since 2007, whereas carpool-vanpool has sort of been on the decline. So telework, as Roz said, is becoming, is fast-growing into the number-one primary alternative mode. What we saw this iteration is that we're seeing more people are teleworking, and again, 41 percent of respondents do it even occasionally, but they're doing so slightly less frequently, so less full-time teleworkers, but more people teleworking. And we also saw that there's a really big potential to increase that, which is a great way to get cars off the road. About 80 percent of people who did not telework, but that had a telework-compatible job, said that they would definitely be interested in doing so if a program could be put in place. We also saw that there was about 350,000 people who could, who had access to a transit and said they could take it to work at least occasionally, so there's a lot of potential to increase transit ridership as well. In terms of why people start using alternative modes, the motive, the number-one motivation was to save money, and that's followed by avoiding congestion. Those are big motivating factors for people, and of course, those factors do vary depending on what mode they start taking. Interestingly, when we asked people what personal benefits they got from taking these modes, the number-one was actually avoiding stress, and that was followed by saving money. So saving money is a big motivating factor, but avoiding stress is really the number-one benefit that people get for doing that. And then, of course, there's a lot of barriers that we saw through this survey, so for different types of modes, there's different types of barriers that people face to start using those, and that's kind of, that's the work that we do through Georgia Commute Options, trying to get people over those barriers. And then, of course, the number-one barrier that sort of underlies everything is free parking. So about 80 percent of commuters in the region had fully subsidized parking, and that makes it hard to convince someone to take a different mode if their parking is fully free. So it's kind of a very, very quick overview of some of the highlights of the survey. Again, if you go to this website, you can get both the technical document, which is very thorough, and a sort of more, a shorter public report for that document. And in the next couple of months, we're going to be working on a data portal, so anyone will be able to go to this website, chop up the data, filter it by region or whatever topic you're interested in, and you'll be able to extract that data for your own use. All right, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, and we appreciate you, Mr. Sloan and also Ms. Tucker. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, all right, we'll move into our next presentation then. And just as a note, please just keep Commissioner Thomas in her thoughts. She just got a notice about a family emergency that she had to leave for, so please do keep her in your thoughts.
I came before you a month ago with four transportation planning proposals, and one of my proposals was that we develop a Henry County Trails Plan. And in response, you shared that while we develop a trails plan, we should also develop a pedestrian safety plan, a plan that will tell us where we need to build sidewalks, crosswalks, pedestrian bridges, and install streetlights. You further expressed that while it's nice to have off-road trails, sidewalks, crosswalks, streetlights are absolutely essential. And you know what, Commissioners? You are absolutely right. So I went back to my office to search, okay, what plans do we have for pedestrians, and what do we need to develop? What I discovered is that this Board of Commissioners adopted a comprehensive transportation plan in 2016, and this transportation plan has a detailed sidewalk development plan, detailed enough for you to take some actions should you choose to do so. What I think may have happened before I came on board is that the board adopted the plan and then probably let it sit on a shelf, and then over time probably forgot what is in this plan. So I am here simply to point out to you what we have, what pedestrian safety plan we have as of today, and then discuss and decide where to go from here. So the sidewalks action plan divides sidewalk developments into a short-term action plan, a midterm action plan, a long-term action plan, and a long-term action plan beyond the planned horizon. So this is the sidewalk short-term action plan, which is to construct sidewalks between 2016 and 2021. It gives a sidewalk project number, tells you the name of the street, where to build sidewalks, gives you the start and end point, and recommends building sidewalks and crosswalks in that section, and gives you a cost estimate. So if I have some surplus $5 available, this is where I would start. My understanding is that the sidewalks that are on the short-term action plan are of higher importance than the ones that are in the midterm, long-term, or beyond-long-term plan. Similarly, this is the sidewalk action plan for the midterm, which is from year 2022 to year 2030. Similarly, have a project number, sidewalk and street, and a start and ending point with cost estimates. I'm not going to go through all of them, but that's the format. Long-term action plan from year 2031 to 2040. And then beyond year 2040, if there are funds available, then we can take action on some additional streets. The plan that this board adopted recommended investing $5 million in, on sidewalks every Now this slide shows where we have sidewalks in Hall County on the left map. The lines- Now, this slide shows where we have sidewalks in Hall County on the left map. The lines shown in red are the ones where we have sidewalks. So it gives you an idea, there's a vast area still left in the county where there are no sidewalks, crosswalks. So there's a great need for those. The table on the right shows what the current plan is to invest in sidewalks. It shows that we are planning to spend $680,000 on sidewalks over a five-year period. Contrast that with the plan's recommendation of $5 million per year. $5 million per year versus $680,000 over five years. What we are investing in sidewalks, Commissioners, is a drop in the bucket. We simply need to invest a whole lot more. Now, in our discussing pedestrian safety last month, one question that came up was what are the, are the top crash locations in Henry County? Well, here they are. The top right map shows where all the crashes took place in 2019 in Henry County. Based on the crash data, there were 12,463 crashes that happened in Henry County in 2019. And the table on the left, every time there's a crash, a police officer comes and makes a report, and that report goes into a current state crash database. And according to this database, the I-75 and Hudson Bridge Road, that location is the most dangerous place in Henry County from a crash standpoint. There were 111 collisions there. Out of those, 19 had collisions involved injuries, 92 property damages, and 28 people were injured. The second was I-75 and Jonesboro Road, in, a location. Number three, Jonesboro Road and Mill Road, which is next to Hudson Bridge. Number four was I-75 and Bill Gardner Parkway. And number five was I-75 and Highway 155. As you see that the top five locations, you see the I-75 pops up over and over because of its traffic volume. More cars, more collisions. What you don't, don't see is that it shows that the top five locations, there were no fatalities. But that does not mean that there were none. They simply happened elsewhere. And there were pedestrian fatalities in Henry County. So, so regarding that, Henry County in fact had higher pedestrian fatalities at a higher rate than the state average, and it caught the attention of the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. And I've been told that the Henry County has received a grant towards this end to improve public and pedestrian safety, and by using those grant funds for public education and raising awareness. More to that, when you dig down into this crash data, there are rows and rows of data in the database, and there is one column that says the cause or the factor that led to the crash. And some causes show up again and again at a higher frequency. And what I found is that one cause that shows up a lot is following the car in front too closely. In fact, it's the number-one cause of crash, crashes in Henry County. So I mean, you're following the car in front too closely, the car just stops all of a sudden, and then bam, you hit rear end. And this shows up again and again in the crash data. Another common cause is failure to yield. I'm driving, I give left signal, I'm trying to try and change lane. The driver behind me sees that I'm trying to change lane. What does the driver do? He presses gas even more to close the gap, determined not to let me change lane. And the mindset is, this is my lane. Don't you dare come to my lane. You stay in your lane. This mindset, this failure to yield, shows up in the crash data over and over as a factor. Another common cause is speeding. And while not at the very top of the list, another common source is this small addictive device. We, as a community, we as a nation are so hooked onto our cell phones, including myself, that we are causing a lot of crashes. We drive distracted, we walk distracted, we even date distracted. I have seen in restaurants, couples sitting together with their eyes hooked onto their cell phones instead of connecting or interacting with each other. This failure on this, being distracted, is showing up in our crash data. So I just want to bring those up as, that we need to be So I brought up once before that we have received a fund from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety to raise a public awareness. So I also shared with you the causes of the crashes that are happening in Henry County. So most of those causes are human factors. So I don't think, yes, we need to build more sidewalks, we need to build more crosswalks and install the streetlights, but I don't think that pouring more asphalt and concrete is the solution. The solution, I believe, is we need to raise more public awareness of what is causing the crashes, and towards that end, use the state grant to, on education campaign, and raising public awareness, and possibly some law enforcement. But while I say law enforcement, I am aware that the police already have their plates full. And we should not, as grown-up adults should not, a police officer should not have to tell us what to do or what not to do. We need to be more conscious of our own actions and what consequences that they bring. Secondly, I suggest that we devote 5% of the SPOS $5 towards sidewalks, crosswalks, and street lighting. And finally, I think that we have a pedestrian safety plan that is detailed enough for us to take actions. When we update our comprehensive transportation plan, we will take a look at the sidewalk plan again and update the cost estimates. But I think we have enough information for us to take the next step. So with a public safety plan, pedestrian safety plan in place, I would ask for your approval. I would ask for your blessing to, to proceed with a Henry County Trails Plan, along with my request for $150,000. That's in my budget request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from, and I've got a couple of them. So I see Commissioner Clemens, you may begin.
First of all, on, I think the second, or third slide, you had the sidewalk plan. Yeah, the second slide. The sec, slide two?
That is slide number three.
Go to slide number two, please. So on the background, where you have the sidewalks, crosswalks, and streetlights, I would ask that bridges be added, for pedestrian bridges. Let me just finish.
Okay.
For pedestrian bridges be added because of our four-lane roads that don't have sidewalks that are going to them. The other thing is that in your cost estimates of the future budgets, you got to make sure that we're adding for inflation, because if you put a number now in 2020, by the time we get the funding to do it and the numbers that you have beside it, it may not be what the cost is to do them at that time. And number three, you listed four, you listed five high accident areas. Go back to that slide, please. And County Manager, I really want to bring attention to this. On this, one out of five high-crash accident areas that Sam has presented, four of those are Interstate 75, which is federal interstates. There's only one on that list that is a county road that we should be concerned about and that we can put dollars into. And that's number three, Jonesboro Road and Mill Road. And he said that was at Hudson Bridge. That is not at Hudson Bridge. That is Jonesboro Road and Mill Road, where I've been talking about those streetlights need to go. It is the only county road that's on that list. I think we need to pay close attention to that. We've been working, trying to get streetlights on the area. There were 53 total collisions there. And that's the local road. So I think that our new staff needs to be educated and updated on local roads and where we can put our dollars. Also, the SPOS increase and change in the SPOS 5 percentage, once the voters have voted on SPOS funds, that's where it has to go. So I don't think that's an option. We have to come up with other solutions, which is what this board did the last meeting, to put $50 million into our roads. But if we're going to go by this crash locations list, we need to look at the roads that the county controls. And I would ask that you guys immediately bring that resolution for those lights that we've been talking about, because it is the only road that's on this list for high, for the top five for crashes. So I'm really concerned about number three, the Jonesboro Road and Mill Road. And we know that that's been a high, high, high collision accidents on that road, and the numbers are here. So we need to definitely immediately act on that.
If I may respond to that, yes, the plan we have was done in 2016, so the, the cost estimates for the sidewalks do need to be updated. And one of my proposals was that we update our comprehensive transportation plan. When that is done, we will update the cost estimate for the projects. Similarly, we will look into pedestrian bridges, along with crosswalks. But as you know, the plan recommended investing $5 million per year on sidewalks and crosswalks.
We've done it.
We're not anywhere near there.
That's right.
But yes, we should at least have a plan.
Yeah. And just make sure I, that one through five list is great, but the only one that's a county, because all of those 75, and so when we look at this, I want the citizens to know that we're talking about, these are accidents on 75. And, and you got five, five numbers there. Four of them are accidents on 75.
But the list goes on. The list goes on.
We're talking about the top five. The top five. And for one of our county roads to be in the top five, and we have not addressed it, is an issue. And so, and I know that staff has been working diligently on it. Sharon Brad met me a couple of weeks ago, disheartened that we still could, when Georgia Power gave us the quote-back of what it was going to take for us to lighten that road, and, and the monies that was allocated to widen Jonesboro Road is gone. So we've got to do something. Not only is it a safety issue, it's, it's a traffic, it's a nightmare for traffic, and it's in the top five, and we've got to address it. So I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention. Thank you, Sam.
Okay. I had a comment, and then I'll see if there are other Commissioners. First of all, this is a very good update. I'm glad to see us not only just looking at where we have been since 2016. I mean, I would say that staff has been working on the plan, but this definitely helps us to be a little bit more aggressive or assertive. So I'm glad to see that we're looking even into the future beyond 2040 as we, we identify things. The thing that I made a note of is just about, all of the crashes that you spoke about were items that were preventable. You know, that, that is something that we as citizens, as stakeholders, as constituents, whether it's on I-75 or local, these are things that actually we as citizens can, can actually address. So I wanted to make a note of that. And then to think about other ways by which we can, I'm kind of tying your update to the previous update on the ride-share opportunities. There's just so much opportunity, so I appreciate you packaging this in a way so that, again, we can educate our citizens, look for what we can do as well. Regarding the, the street lighting, the crosswalks, the sidewalks, I totally agree that this is very important. Again, I know that SPOS 5 has been voted, but there was some discretionary, meaning that there were some dollars that were non-allocated to some items. So if there is an opportunity, when you look at that resolution, to help us do better than the $680,000, that is something I'll look to staff about as well. So those are my thoughts on that. But again, just glad to hear that we're beginning to, you know, put more attention on to our traffic crash volumes, because I think that's important. But again, I'm very pleased to see that it's something that we as citizens can, can educate ourselves for. And we just do need to implement that plan, that education plan that you're talking about. So more information, I will look forward on that. And I do too look forward to a resolution to address whatever it is that we can, within the realm that we can, special regarding SPOS 5. So it's all good.
Speaking of where to find funds for sidewalks, I did discover something that I didn't know before, that right now we are seeking projects for CDBG grant, Community Development Blog Grant. And apparently, the CDBG grants can be used for road projects, for sidewalk projects, something I, I wasn't, wasn't aware of. So maybe we'll, we can look into that as a potential source.
Well, and, and one other thing, too. If we can check into some potential grants through the Board of Health, because there's been a focus on safety and health with sidewalks. So if there's any grant opportunities there, we probably need to just connect with that, the Board of Health as well in that regard. Okay? Any other thoughts or questions? Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Speaking of SPOS 5, I think all road widens, I think we're doing sidewalks with all road widens, and any new business that comes into the county has to build eight-foot wide sidewalks. I think we have a lot of it covered there. Did you figure out any of that in your calculations?
I, in my dealing with the...
Light in as well. All that's already in SPOS 5. So I know 90% of my roads, 90% of my SPOS is roads. And with every road that's being widened, we're putting sidewalks and streetlights in. So did you figure any of that in your, in your calculations?
I just simply shared with you what is our 2016 plan. So I haven't added anything to it. My purpose was simply to point out to you what we have so far. But I am aware that when a new development is proposed, that we require them to install sidewalks. One thing that I discussed with the planning and zoning staff was, can Henry County set up a, a fund where in lieu of building a sidewalk, a developer can contribute funds? And that fund can be used to build sidewalk, which may be more in need than what the development is being proposed. And I think some of the local governments have, have also considered that. I think that could be a great idea, building, having a fund for sidewalks that, and that's funded by private developers.
Anything else, Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, the only other thing I would like to, just make a comment of, you make a mention that we're going to plan to update the Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Plan. So we look forward to what that timeline looks like as well. So if you can give us an update sometime, because we do need to move forward with that as well.
Well, the Atlanta Regional Commission is willing to hear from us that we have the local match, and then we are ready to start.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you again. All right. We do have Mr. Salters, who's now going to come and give us a Transit Master Plan update.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Excuse me. I want to briefly inform the Board of Henry County's efforts to have a Transit Master Plan completed. This project will be a collaborative effort with Henry County and Atlanta Transit Authority. The Master Plan will provide a path forward for transit operations and investments for Henry County, and as it continues to grow. This morning, I have Lori Zan and John Ravenow from Atlanta Transit Authority here. They will further provide some insight and answer any questions you have about, about the Transit Master Plan.
Good morning, Chair Wood, Commissioners. My name's John Ravenow. I'm the Transit Funding Director for the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority. This morning, here to just discuss a few of the items related to Henry County's Transit Master Plan. County staff approached us several months ago, asking how the ATL could support an effort for Henry County to embark on a master plan for its existing transit services, as well as what the midterm and long-term range plans would be for the county in terms of public transportation. Two of the services that the ATL offers is to support or provide transit planning consulting services whereby the ATL would hold a contract on behalf of the county with a contractor identified by county staff to embark on this type of effort, as well as working to support the drafting of an RFP and process guidance. Some of the benefits that a Transit Master Plan would provide to Henry County, or providing a path forward for existing transit operations, as well as a plan for future investments in transit, it would provide a proactive use to land use, or proactive approach to land use and transit investment, allowing the, the county to look prospectively into the future and identify areas where transit... future and identify areas where transit needs may increase based on future growth. It allows the public to engage in this discussion, to really identify areas that the public thinks are important from a transit perspective, and then also supports Henry County in submitting projects to both the ATL's Regional Transit Plan, as well as in the future to ARC's Transit Improvement Program, or better known as the TIP. Essentially, how the process would work based on how ATL has structured this with previous counties or other counties in the region, is that this would be a county-led effort. So it would be primarily county staff on a RFP selection committee, county staff with one ATL staff member who would lead the project as a project manager, but again, driven by the county's needs, the county's desires, and the county's input to really get the outcomes that best serve the county. The county would provide its eighty percent federal funding through its annual sub-allocation, as well as twenty percent local dollars in match. It would approve the scope of services and provide direct input in the direction of the project. The ATL's role is really just a shepherd. It would serve to ensure that the RFP is done, meeting all the federal requirements through FTA. It would enter into a sub-recipient arrangement with Henry County, so that Henry County would not be required to worry about any of the federal compliance concerns that are generally dealt with, with FTA funds. Additionally, it would help to draft the scope of services in coordination with county staff. It would provide at no cost, a project manager, Lori Sand, who's with me in the audience, she's the primary person that would serve on this project, that would lead it with county staff. She's served on several other projects throughout the region, DeKalb County, she's been a member of the Fulton County Project, she's currently working as the project manager for the Forsyth County Project, she's involved in Smyrna, so she's very aware of all the different projects going on, in addition to her work with the Regional Transit Plan. And then finally, the ATL would essentially manage the procurement process, as I mentioned earlier. So that's just a little bit about the benefits, as well as to what the arrangement would be like. But again, I wanna impress that this is really a county-driven process, a county-driven outcome for the plan. ATL's really here as a value add to help shepherd the process along, as well as to provide support in terms of compliance with FTA and things like that. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Ty.
We're glad to answer any question that you may have.
Okay, I've got a comment, but any questions are coming from the board? Okay, the only question I have, back in 2016, we also had a transit plan feasibility study. So when we update the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, is that gonna be separate or in conjunction with the Comprehensive Transportation Plan? Because it involves some level of citizens' input, and even some suggestion of fixed routes, and, you know, for our own transit, and, you know, fixed routes even to downtown and airport and all of that. So are we gonna update that plan as we are actually developing some priorities as well?
Yes, that would be the basis of the plan. We'll go off of what we did in 2016, and they will start from there.
Okay, got it. And it will be part of the Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Plan update if the Board approves those matching funds?
Our plan is that the two plans will go on simultaneously.
Got it, okay, that's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, we thank you, and thank you all for joining us today on these... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I know we had, I think Johnny, Gary, maybe yourself, I know towards the end of last year, you guys were pushing, talking about pushing for a T-SPOLOST, and wanted to see if there was still an appetite for a T-SPOLOST.
Well, I will answer to that. I think by the update of the Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Plan, along with transit, along with all the things that we're talking about with SPOLOST, I mean, if we have a shortfall, which we will have, I think we definitely need to entertain some thoughts about it. But identifying the priorities are the key. Okay, any other thoughts or questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, again, we appreciate all those updates on our transportation, so thank you again. And we'll now move into our county manager comments, and invite up Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews for her comments.
Good morning, Chair and Board members.
Good morning.
Have quite a few updates this morning, so please bear with me, based on some information and requests from the Commissioners, but wanted to start with a bit of good news. In August 2018, I think several of the Board members will remember that our county leadership team, along with officials from Hampton, Locust Grove, City of McDonough, and Stockbridge, traveled to Maryland for a specialized FEMA training, and it was made possible through a grant that Don Ash and his emergency management team actually solicited, provided for, submitted on behalf of the county. As you will recall, Henry County was the first county in the state to even be selected for this training. And as a result of the training, there were several initiatives that were identified as part of the training. One of those initiatives that were identified was a rescue task force. And as a result, immediately after that training, our staff came back and start looking at how do we implement what we've learned, so it's just not a training that we're attending, and then we don't come back and do anything with it. Fast forward, lasts about two, three, four weeks ago, our communications team actually submitted a application to ACCG through their Georgia County of Excellence Award for specifically this rescue task force initiative. And I'm pleased to announce this morning that Henry County was selected. And so what that means is that during the ACCG Conference in April, our Henry County team will be recognized for this rescue task force initiative. I'm only standing here to congratulate staff, because it took a lot of staff effort to get to this point, not only including an application, but our communications team did a phenomenal job, specifically Ed Gore, who's behind the scenes all the time, and I'm gonna ask him to come out, so the Board can recognize him. But they also developed a video that was submitted as part of the application. And so bear with me this morning, we have the video available that we want to show to the Board, but also one of the Board members that will be attending the ACCG Conference in Savannah to know that we will be on the stage and recognized as a county of excellence because of this rescue task force initiative. So at this time, I'll get the video aired up, and hopefully I haven't left anything out. If so, I'm sure that our public safety team will definitely chime in. So give me one second.
And as you're doing that, we definitely want to commend all of those that did attend. There were elected officials from county and city, and just about representation from every department, but I am very grateful for Don Ash and his team for submitting that, and then also coming back for follow-up to make sure that our police, fire, and all other units are working together in case there is a tragedy here. So thank you all again. Okay, just a moment, Commissioner Clemens got a...
Are you ready, Chair? Can I make one more comment? Okay, and while you're doing that, also, we just sat here for an hour talking about safety and plans, and I want to make sure that that hour that we sat here and listened to all of that transit stuff didn't go in vain. So because you and Brad have done such an amazing job, and they're recognizing you all over the state for your work, I want to ask that you all look into identifying... I know Gary and Commissioner Barham and I have identified main corridors and areas in Henry County that are dark and that we needed streetlights in. And I would just ask if you would get something from each Commissioner to identify a major corridor in your districts that need streetlights that have been having lots of accidents, so that we can bring that before the Board, because we need to make sure that we're getting these streetlights in place immediately. This is March now, and I don't want to go to June and July before we do that, and we need to go ahead and add that in. And I know you and Brad had already looked at some calls for Commissioner Barham's area that had that major corridor with the accidents, but we've gotta get these streetlights in place. Don Ash has talked about the accidents and the 911 calls that are coming in, people just running over in ditches because they can't see. So if every Commissioner could get a major corridor, if they need those streetlights in, I think that that will help us.
Absolutely. And certainly, please provide that information to my office, and then we will coordinate with the respective, either Georgia Power or EMC, to go ahead and get a call, because we are going through the county now, because we've heard from you all a couple of meetings on the priority of getting this done. So we're ready on the east side, west side of Jonesboro Road, which is the piece, Commissioner Clemens, I think you've talked to us about continuously, and then we're looking at the east side as well. But if there are other areas in which you've gotten a lot of calls, and we have a lot of crash data that can support it, certainly please provide that information to us. Thank you.
Engine one, squad one, rescue seven, rescue three. Engine one, squad one, rescue seven, rescue three. Active signal fifty, twenty, King Mill Road, across the forty-two. Active signal fifty.
When fire emergency medical services personnel arrive on a scene, the first thought for them is how to quickly save lives, often having no concern for their own safety. However, times are changing, and first responders often face, or frequently, dangerous circumstances where their very lives are often at stake. Public safety agencies are now faced with a hostility many could not conceive years ago. But as times and circumstances change, so do procedures to learn, and training is now utilizing best practices and updated procedures. Henry County is at the forefront of these best practices. Henry County Government, in preparation for a worst-case scenario, has implemented a rescue task force program that provides fire, EMS, and law enforcement personnel with the skills and knowledge to respond in case of an active shooter or hostile event, in order to save more lives and protect those responding. In other words, making sure that those who are working to save lives in an emergency are safe to do so with life-saving gear and extensive training to avoid becoming victims while treating victims. In April of 2018, the National Fire Protection Association released a new standard for active shooter incident preparedness that included guidelines for training and purchasing gear. The NFPA 3000 Standard for an Active Shooter Hostile Event Response Program provided a viable, community-based option for a standard approach.
In June of 2018, a group of Henry County Fire Department personnel attended a conference detailing the new NFPA 3000 Standard, which covers the rescue task force and active shooter hostile event response.
In August of 2018, Henry County took a team of public safety personnel, leadership, and elected officials from the county and its four cities to FEMA headquarters in Emmitsburg, Maryland, for a week of intense training coordinated by FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security. What resulted was a team approach in best practices, coordinated training, equipment, and communication.
We had an opportunity to participate in a competitive grant program, and we were able to take all our cities and county public safety agencies, as well as our county leadership, our elected officials throughout the county, to take the coordinated complex class. So from that class, we brought back the lessons learned, and most importantly, we wanted to apply what we learned and not put it on a shelf.
The FEMA training was innovative in that it brought together all facets of local government to coordinate a response.
After we completed our training in Emmitsburg in 2018, where we first got to learn about the rescue task force, the thing that made it so successful is that we had all the government players there, from elected officials, the county management, to department heads, and we had a complete buy-in from all levels of government. Once we got that buy-in, we got to come back to the county, and then we got to hand it off to the trainers from fire, police, even from county entities, city entities, that made it so successful, where they all got to work together, put it on one platform, and everybody get trained the exact same way.
The FEMA training also identified some deficiencies in county apparatus and equipment.
Well, we took our team up to Emmitsburg, Maryland for FEMA training, and noticed our weak points. We went through a week training with all our partners within the community, and noticed that we were deficiency in several emergency response aspects, one being our tactical response unit for our police department. Also, our communications was lacking, some of our SWAT equipment.
The NFPA 3000, along with the FEMA Department of Homeland Security training, has resulted in the rescue task force initiative that is now being used by Henry County Government and its partner agencies.
Well, the rescue task force is relatively a new type of training among first responders. This past summer, we started a very intense training program, which included the Henry County Police Department, the Henry County Sheriff's Office, Henry County Fire Department, and all the municipalities within the county. And the goal of this training is to bring everyone together to act as one unit during any critical situation that we may have. While the incident is taking place, law enforcement is addressing the threat, we will have law enforcement, along with fire department personnel, paramedics, enter to give medical assistance to anyone that's injured. This allows us to get in, and paramedics get in, at a lot quicker rate than in the past, and the ultimate goal of this is to save lives.
In May of 2019, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approved a resolution for the purchase of ballistic vests, helmets, and mass casualty trauma kits that support the implementation of the rescue task force program. With the alarming rate of active shooter incidents taking place in our country, Henry County Public Safety will stay prepared in cases of emergencies with the help of the new rescue task force program, equipment, and training.
From leadership to emergency responders, everyone has a part to play in the solution to these threats. It also takes the cooperation of elected officials, county management, and county administration to make this program a success.
The program calls for training and a collaborative effort between fire and law enforcement agencies. Once law enforcement enters and clears the area of a threat, fire personnel can then enter and provide swift critical care to those affected by the incident. The assertion is that more lives will be saved by having fire and EMS providers enter the warm zone. They bring with them life-saving supplies like tourniquets and chest seals to stop victims from bleeding out before they can be treated.
We put a plan together that everybody agreed with, and everybody could be on board with for continuity. Once the actual trainings start, we spent about two months offering two four-hour classes each day, again, for two months, to train over seven-hundred-and-fifty personnel in public safety entities across the county.
It's important to understand that this was not a one-time training event. This training will be ongoing from recruit school all the way throughout your career.
With this certified equipment and with complete and ongoing training, Henry County's public safety agencies and personnel will be able to safely address the hazards they encounter during an active shooter event, and in return, save lives in the community. For more information on Henry County Government, please visit henrycounty-ga.com.
Again, Chair and Board, I do want to take this time to not only thank our public safety team, but Mr. Ed Gore, who hits up our videography that's in the back of this building, in terms of making sure that we're prepared when we are submitting documents and things of that nature. So at this time, if you don't mind, I'd like to have our public safety representative, Ed Mr. Gore, come forward, so that we can get a group picture with the Board, and then I'll move through the remainder of my comments. Thank you.
Well, let's join for the picture.
Thank you. but also supporting the requests that have come forth since the trip has occurred. Just to go over a couple of things, during the budget workshop meetings, there were a number of requests that were submitted to the county manager's office, and so that information is being compiled and will be available for the Board during the March tenth meeting. Specifically, there were requests regarding the salaries for our judges, some Guardian at Lydum information, which I did receive on yesterday, that I've gotta get with them in terms of consolidating what all that means, and then just any additional budget information that was requested. During the budget workshop meetings, I know Commissioner Barham requested some information specifically on the lease agreement with McDonough City Hall, and that information has been provided. But if there's something further that you'd like for us to pursue, please make me aware of that. Also, during the meeting, Commissioner Holmes mentioned opportunity zones, and I was brought it back to staff in terms of what can we do to make sure that we're at the table, specifically when opportunities are there. And so Tucson Kirk, who is our Planning and Economic Development Cluster Leader, believe it or not, this is one of his things that he really, really enjoys talking about. And so I've asked him to do a little research in terms of how we can make sure that we don't miss the mark in the future, if there's an... During the Board meeting two weeks ago, Commissioner Thomas inquired about information regarding the employee appeals that have been concluded by our HR team. Immediately following the meeting this morning, Ms. Senio will provide to each Board member a spreadsheet indicating those positions and the grades that were impacted by the appeal process. So that information is available, and because we are presenting it to the Board, it is a public document, and so I want the public to be aware that it is available for anyone to review, but wanted to make sure that we did provide that information to you all. Also, Chair Wood mentioned it briefly in terms of amending the agenda this morning regarding wrecker services. Over the last couple of years, there has been a lot of conversation regarding our wrecker service policy ordinance, whatever we're going to call it, but there has been a lot of concern from constituents, specifically how the policy is administered and how fees are being assessed. And so over the last couple of months, staff has worked diligently with our county attorney and our public safety team in terms of looking at, how do we rewrite, revisit, make amendments to the policy? And after reviewing the policy with some recommended changes, staff still feels that it will not adequately address the issues that we're receiving phone calls on, specifically how costs are being assessed, and residents understanding that while we are calling wrecker providers, that a lot of times it may be a civil matter between the wrecker provider and the individual. And so what staff has finally determined is that we no longer need a wrecker policy, but we need to create an RFP for wrecker services. And we need to treat wrecker services just like we treat any other vendor or contractor that's doing business with the county. They will go through an RFP process where they will submit proposals to our procurement team. Those proposals will be reviewed, and then a recommendation will be made to the Board of Commissioners, in which you all will determine who we should award that contract to. Now, that helps in having the RFP, because if there are issues, we're under a contract, and that contract will outline our rules of engagement in terms of how we will run our wrecker service. One of the things that we will be very clear about is, in those proposals, we will allow the wrecker providers to provide us what they cost for services, but we will also have a maximum amount that will be allowed to be charged for certain services. And so that's something that staff will work through, because I think a lot of the calls and the complaints that you all may be receiving, or that we've heard from constituents, is specifically regarding how the costs are being assessed. We're hoping that we will have this RFP ready in the next 30 days so that we can get it out on the streets, and then provide the providers with an opportunity to submit those proposals to our procurement team, and then again, the Board of Commissioners making a final decision on how that will be awarded. At this time, we've had a lot of conversation in terms of, will there be one award that's awarded to one provider, or will we allow multiple awards to be awarded, be it the northern end of the county or the southern end of the county? And I think we're still having a lot of conversations about that, and so we will definitely bring to the Board a recommendation in terms of what should happen, rather than say, here, Board, you all decide what you want to do. And so that is the direction that we're going in, and hopefully, again, we can get that to the Board expeditiously, because I know that it has been something that you all have been talking about, and we've had a couple of residents that have come forward expressing some concerns about the current policy. I'll pause for a moment if there are specific questions regarding the wrecker policy.
So are there any questions from the Board? Okay.
If not, at this time, I do want to pause for a second, because I think everyone has heard about the coronavirus, and I think this morning, there were two confirmed cases here in metro Atlanta, specifically Fulton County. I wanted you all to be aware that our EMA team is not just getting to the table. We have had several conversations, and there is a stakeholder meeting scheduled for this afternoon, but I think Mr. Ash has been contacted by some of our stakeholders in the community, and just wanted the entire Board to be aware of where we are in the process, the steps that we're taking, and what information we'd like for you all to share from our social media and from our public notices that are going out. So at this time, if there are no further questions from me, I will turn it over to Mr. Don Ash.
Okay. Commissioner Clemens got a question, and we can welcome him.
So two things for you, Sherri.
Yes, ma'am.
On the opportunity zones, I know that we have missed that federal window to apply for that, but as Henry County try to craft our message to be a business-friendly and leadership-based community, the TADS will serve the same purpose. It's almost four years, I've been talking TADS, TADS, TADS. I think that we need to push forward. I don't know where we are with that. I've heard it's legislation, we've hired somebody, and we still don't have a TAD after four years. That is one thing that we can do to attract businesses to Henry County. That must happen immediately. We got to get on that, and I'm really, really waiting to see how you guys move a little further now that you have key staff in place. Let's get this TAD done, please. The other thing is that I would like to request that we implement a local Henry County coronavirus task force with our school system, with our police department, with our hospitals, and I'm requesting that we implement something locally so that we can not only, one, educate, but be prepared if there's something, because what we don't want is a public outcry because people don't understand. Just like when we went down, I wasn't shaking hands anymore. You know, it's just those little things like that that we have to think about, and we want to start getting the message out. It should be on our website. There should be a link that we, as Commissioners, can share with our constituents. So I am willing to sit on that Board, as well as work with getting the key people in place, because we need a local task force.
Absolutely, and your timing is perfect. Don's going to come up and talk through the efforts that we're taking, then I'm going to put Brad on the spot, because we have had some internal conversations about how we protect ourselves internally within our own administration buildings, and some efforts that we're putting forth for that. So I'll let Don speak, and then Mr. Johnson will come up and close us out.
Okay, just make sure we have the school system and our local departments on board with that.
Absolutely.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Last night, we are aware that Governor Kemp acknowledged the first cases of coronavirus in the state of Georgia. First and foremost, I want to inform our Commissioners and our citizens, this is not a time to panic. This is not a time to run to our stores and raid the shelves, but it is an excellent opportunity for each of our families to review their emergency plans, planning for interruptions of services, changes in supply line. So that's what we're trying to get out. The COVID-19 threat is still a low extreme threat to the state of Georgia. Last week, with our county management team, we began having discussions, and one of the things we talked about is the formation of a local coronavirus committee. You will see that coming to fruition today as we have our stakeholders meeting. That committee will be comprised of all our public safety, our key stakeholders, our hospital, our Board of Education, key members of our community. Even for the meeting this afternoon, we'll have all our, not just our public education, but our private schools. In Henry County, we have five major private schools that will be involved in that discussion. That discussion will be led today by District Four Public Health that makes up the 12 counties in the region, Henry County being the most populous county within that region. Some of the things we're educating, and we will continue to educate, and I know my boss, Brad, will talk about it as well, is we're educating our workforce, our employees, and our community. If you're sick, stay home. Practice good hygiene. Wash your hands continuously, something we've learned throughout school. Our goal is continually to take a proactive approach to Henry County, to let them know that we are aware of the threat, but we're mitigating every, we're making every attempt to mitigate the impact on our county. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys. You will see daily correspondence coming from our formed committee, as well as our team educating our public.
Thank you, Don, and Commissioners, moving forward, the next step on there, we have already met with facilities, I should go ahead and preparing all the cleaning supplies. We want to make sure we have an abundance of cleaning supplies. We want to have work times in the morning and afternoon, we actually clean work sites, have directions and procedures for that. We're working on a personnel policy change right now, and hopefully out by tomorrow morning, that will basically outline personnel responsibilities and how we will help eliminate or counteract some of the virus potential in our service. But we have been working for over a week and a half now, putting together the plans, been in contact even with the CDC, because we want to make sure we are prepared when it happens, and this basically, you know, when it happens, not really if it happens. So things to remember, Commissioner Clemens, you mentioned earlier, limit contact, limit the hand-touching, face-touching, stuff like that. It's just like the flu. If we do our basic hygiene and take some basic precautions, we'll, you know, we'll get through this. But again, we meet with stakeholders this afternoon, and we are in close contact with all of the schools. That's very important to us of that at-risk, and our healthcare facilities also, because they are our two most at-risk populations we have in Henry County. So again, we'll have updates every day. You got your first this morning by email from Melissa, and it's basically a CDC update, so you would have your talking points, and if you have any questions, you definitely can call at any time, and we'll help you motivate the threat. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions or comments from the Board further? Okay. All right, yes, Mr. Ash.
Sorry about that. One thing I failed to mention, Commissioner Clemens, you mentioned also, we do have a direct link on our county site for ready.gov that provides continuous updated information for our citizens and public and workforce as well.
Okay. Send me, just email me that link so that I don't have to search through the site to find it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, we thank you and appreciate those updates as well, and congratulations to everyone regarding that county of excellence recognition for safety on FEMA. So at this time now, we'll move to the consent agenda, and we've got several items. And the first one is on building and plan review in District Two. It's a resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for heritage at Crystal Lake and the subdivision on Dutch Town Road. Likewise, there is another one in District Two, and it too is for creation of a new streetlight district for Fears Mill Phase Three on Deer Lang. And then in juvenile court, we have a resolution allowing juvenile court to apply for a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to continue the coordination of our juvenile mental health court in FY '21. And then we've got two resolutions from E911 EMA. One regarding a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency for access to the Grants Portal for funding through GMA and grants program administered. And then two under E91 is a resolution approving the Henry County Emergency Communications Tower space for the communication systems assigned to the Georgia Department of Public Safety. And then the final item under the consent agenda is under Capital Projects, which is a resolution authorizing the Chair and our County Manager to execute documents necessary for conveyance of fixed assets relating to the water line and compact fire line for Henry County Fire Station Number Eight to the Henry County Water Authority. So are there any items the Board wishes to remove from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Motion to approve by District Two, seconded by District Five. Vote 501, Commissioner Thomas, not present.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you, we appreciate you. So we're now moving to the next item under Public Safety Fire Department, and this is an ordinance for public safety prevention and protection. So we'll invite up Mr. Brad Johnson, along with our Chiefs, to join in into the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, and Commissioners. This morning, I'm here with the public safety team, the fire side, to bring to you some changes in our fire code and ordinance. Chief Phillips, his team is tasked looking at our ordinances and looking at what we need to do to bring them up to date. His staff did that with the Fire Marshal, Chief Black, leading that effort, and took out wardies. We still had volunteer firefighters in the ordinance. We still had several different things that do not pertain to firefighting or fire safety at this time. So as they went through it, they made the changes. You guys have it in your books, the changes, and then Chief Black will go over some this morning and ask any questions you have. So I'll turn it over this time to Assistant Chief Michael Black.
Good morning, Chair, fellow Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Black. I'm the Assistant Chief of Henry County Fire Prevention Bureau. Behind me, I have Captain Dale Hutchinson. He is our Senior Inspector and Plan Reviewer, and be able to field some questions at the end of our presentation. We are here today to present Agenda Item 10, an Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 34 Public Safety, Subchapter 2, the Fire Prevention and Protection. Fire prevention and protection was enacted to establish the role of the Fire Department in protecting public health, safety, and welfare. Further, this chapter provides for rules and regulations to improve public safety by promoting the control of fire hazards, providing for the abatement of fire hazards, establishing the responsibilities and procedures for code enforcement, and setting forth the standards for compliance. The proposed, let me, oop, okay. The proposed amendment calls for the removal of abstract language that is both vague and open to interpretation, as well as the addition of a fire alarm and fire sprinkler ordinance. The current ordinances span from 1982 to 1992, with few exceptions. Exponential growth increases the pressure on the Fire Department to stay abreast of hazards present in any given community. A comprehensive prevention program is designed to manage risk and loss for a variety of incidents with updated codes and ordinances. A few of the more notable amendments to the current fire prevention and protection ordinance include 349-9, which is the Fire District Protection, or I'm sorry, the Fire Protection District established. The new proposal includes all land known as Henry County, Georgia, with the exception of the unincorporated areas of the city of McDonough. There's also a Section 34113, Open Burning and Air Quality Control. The purpose of the addition and the expansion of this particular ordinance is to outline the permit requirements for outdoor burning, which also allows for recreational burning without a permit, which includes your campfires and bonfires, which we field a lot of questions every year about that. So hopefully, that language will clear some of that up. We've added a section to inspections, Investigation, Enforcement. Basically, we're trying to streamline our processes. It outlines the requirements for inspections, plan review, investigations, and for fire safety compliance, our certificates of occupancies. Hopefully, with the expansion of this section, the updated this section, it'll
at what we need to do to bring them up to date. His staff did that with the Fire Marshal, Chief Black, leading that effort, and took out ordinances. We still had volunteer firefighters in, in the ordinance. We still had several different things that do not pertain to firefighting or fire safety at this time. So as they went through it, they made the changes. You guys have it in your books, the changes, and then Chief Black will go over some this morning and ask any questions you have. So I'll turn it over this time to Assistant Chief Michael Black.
Good morning, Chair, fellow Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Black. I'm the Assistant Chief of Henry County Fire Prevention Bureau. Behind me, I have Captain Dale Hutchinson. He is our Senior Inspector and Plan Reviewer and be able to field some questions at the end of our presentation. We are here today to present Agenda Item Ten, an Ordinance Amendment to Chapter Three, Four, Public Safety, Subchapter Two, the Fire Prevention and Protection. Fire prevention and protection was enacted to establish the role of the Fire Department in protecting public health, safety, and welfare. Further, this chapter provides for rules and regulations to improve public safety by promoting the control of fire hazards, providing for the abatement of fire hazards, establishing the responsibilities and procedures for code enforcement, and setting forth the standards for compliance. The proposed, let me, oop, okay. There we go. The proposed amendment calls for the removal of abstract language that is both vague and open to interpretation, as well as the addition of a fire alarm and fire sprinkler ordinance. The current ordinances span from nineteen eighty-two to nineteen ninety-two with few exceptions. Exponential growth increases the pressure on the Fire Department to stay abreast of hazards present in any given community. A comprehensive prevention program is designed to manage risk and loss for a variety of incidents with updated codes and ordinances. A few of the more notable amendments to the current Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance include three, four, nine, nine, which is the Fire District Protection, or, I'm sorry, the Fire Protection District established. The new proposal includes all land known as Henry County, Georgia, with the exception of the unincorporated area of the city of McDonough. There's also a section, three, four, one, one, three, open burning and air quality control. The purpose of the addition and the expansion of this particular ordinance is to outline the permit requirements for outdoor burning, which also allows for recreational burning without a permit, which includes your camp fires and bonfires, which we field a lot of questions every year about that. So hopefully, that language will clear some of that up. We've added a section to inspections, investigation, enforcement. Basically, we're trying to streamline our processes. It outlines requirements for inspections, plan review, investigations, and for fire safety compliance, our certificates of occupancies. Hopefully, with the expansion of this section, the updated this section, it'll allow our business members to have a one-stop shop when they visit our website, or the code of ordinance under Fire Protection. It's going to answer a lot of their questions about what's required of them in the beginning stages of the process. We've also added a section to the Fire Watch. We've expanded Fire Watch definition to include what we refer to as extra duty. And the reason we did this is we have a lot of special events in and around Henry County throughout the year. A lot of these events are large enough where they could have a substantial impact on our public safety and our public services. So what this section does is going to require them to provide, provide with us a public safety plan and additional staffing to help, help with those impacts that it's going to, on, on public safety. The biggest portion, I would say, of our amendment process, we have added a fire alarm ordinance and a fire sprinkler ordinance to the public safety section of the code ordinance. Now, I will point out briefly that the, there is sprinkler requirements as well as alarm requirements in the ULDC, but it's in Appendix B one at the bottom, not prevalent. So what we want to do is move it over to the fire ordinance where it belongs, where people look for it, and expand on it. Now, again, there's two sections. There's fire alarm ordinance and sprinkler ordinance. Under the fire alarm ordinance, what we're asking for is buildings with sprinkler systems must have a fire alarm system as well. For proper notification and extinguishment, they work in combination. We also want to, it also applies to all new businesses and new construction projects. This is not retro, so it's all new businesses and new construction projects. Combination alarm and suppression systems protect both property and people. Combination alarm and suppression systems reduce the risk of fire-related death by eighty-two percent. On the sprinkler ordinance side, we're asking to include all daycare occupancies and personal care homes. Now, daycares are already covered in the ULDC, but we're also asking for residential personal care homes sprinkler requirements. We allow them to put in a thirteen D system for daycares and personal care home. This is a cost-efficient system for them. Multi-family dwellings and residential occupancies with two or more dwelling units, which includes townhomes and condominiums, we're, we're asking for sprinklers as well as sprinklers in attics and breezeways. This slide shows the speed of today's house fires and the effect fire sprinklers have in keeping fires tenable. Now, our focus, again, for this presentation are the multi-family dwellings and care facilities. During the first ninety seconds after the fire starts, the smoke alarm activates and heat from the fire activates the sprinkler. A fire sprinkler will help suppress the fire in less than one point five minutes, giving you time to escape. Without fire sprinklers, fire growth is unrestricted. The odds of escaping decreases quickly as flashover can occur in three to five minutes. According to the Underwriters' Laboratory, which conducts state-of-the-art fire safety testing, you have three minutes or less to escape. Thirty years ago, you had up to seventeen minutes to escape from a house fire, but today's homes burn faster. The reason is open floor plans provide oxygen and don't provide barriers, and synthetic building materials and furnishing burn at a much higher rate than natural products of years ago. To summarize our presentation, amendments to the Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance will provide both the business community and the citizen of Henry County with a more contemporary set of ordinances. The proposed amendments will, will serve to clarify the role of the Fire Department in protecting public health, safety, and welfare. Any improvements in overall fire safety must be improvements in residential fire safety for multi-family dwellings and licensed residential care facilities. Sprinkler requirements for multi-family dwellings provide next-level security and protection for close proximity residents. Sprinkler requirements for licensed residential care facilities will protect children and older adults who are particularly vulnerable to fire. Combination fire alarm and fire sprinkler systems reduce the risk of fire-related deaths by eighty-two percent. In conclusion, I would like to say that ordinance searches are in place to protect public health, safety, and general welfare, welfare, excuse me. An amendment to the current Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance is overdue and necessary to keep up with the changes in technology, construction practices, and other related variables in order to provide the latest and most comprehensive fire safety standards possible. Our business owners, our citizens, and all visitors of Henry County rely on the Fire Department to be vigilant and to make those recommendations that will save lives, reduce injury, and prevent property loss. Again, thank you for the opportunity to create a safer place to work in there. Do we have any questions or comments?
All right, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons, and then Commissioner Wilson.
Captain Black, thank you. And I guess this is for you and for Brad. Under the fire alarm section, you put it applies to all new businesses and new construction. My concern is for old buildings that shut down in the county, and somebody goes in, and then they want to use it maybe for the same use or a different use. This would not apply to them, and I would like to see that if a building is closed down, if a new owner takes place, even if it's not new construction or new business, they still should be, have to come up to code, and I think that's one of the state laws, and I would like to see us have that in place. I don't like that this just applies to new businesses and new construction. I understand the new business, but I guess that would take care of if it's a new business going in. But Captain Black, make sure that we cover that. We need to make sure that the language is clear for that.
Yes, we can clean the language up a little bit on that. However, there are already codes in place on the state level on the IBC, International Fire Code. When a building closes and reopen, it's still based on the type of business going into occupancy, and they're only required to come up to code, current code standards. If there's renovation greater than fifty percent of the value of the property, they change of classification, which is already in the code section. So that's regulated in, in another manner. But I see we were talking about the language in that one section there.
And the thing is, is that this, you know, this becomes an issue for Commissioners when business owners don't get what they want. I mean, I'm blessed to have had years and years of service of dealing with this from, as a business owner, so I know that this needs to be cleaned up right here. That's number one. The other thing is, under the sprinkler component, where you talked about personal care homes, the state has a policy now that they want seniors or disabled people not to be in what they call institutionalized facilities. They want them in homes with families. And so, for instance, if, you know, if you, Captain Black, wanted to bring in a disabled citizen that was not a family member in your home, you would have to have a business license as a personal care home, but it is your personal home. So this would trigger them having to be sprinkled if they came to our business. So we need to make sure that it defines, like for daycares, it's if it's six or more, or if it's in a residential area. So when we said personal care homes, we need to talk about whether it's residential or not. So if you would just look at that, we need to address that. And then the townhomes being sprinkled, I would like to look at that because I know that we're looking at brownstone-type townhomes coming to Henry County, which we don't, I think there's one section that may have it off of two sixteen, but you know the styles that I'm talking about, that it's simple feet, so it's for sale. It's not the multi-family apartment-type things. And I don't think those personal homes are sprinkled. So we need to make sure that if we're looking at, you know, those type of homes that may be multi-family homes, what, what are the traditional or standard codes for that, and are they supposed to be sprinkled as well? I don't know how that works.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe it's more fire-rated stuff than having a sprinkler in your, your home. Because I mean, like, even our single-family homes now don't have sprinkler systems in it. So I don't know how you would address that.
Let's start with your first comment concerning daycares. We are currently, child daycare facilities is already in the ULDC. We're just asking for it to be moved over. And that includes all childcare facilities, including residential, which we've been standard on that for several years now. On the personal care home side, there's code ordinances already in place in IBC, International Business Code, as well as International Residential Code. We have been, we have had all applicants comply with our recommendations for over a year now. We're just trying to put it into our current codes and standards. That way, we don't have to pull from four different books. It's in there. This is where it came from. But when we look at the Life Safety Code according to the state, when we're talking about daycares and personal care homes, in the state's point of view, they take into consideration, do all occupants have the ability as a group to move reliably to the point of safety within three minutes? There are a list of criteria, education of the occupants' caregivers, but when you, from the state's point of view, do all occupants have the ability to move to a point of safety? The state goes on to say in their goals and objectives, as conceded by the state, are that all personal care homes and community living arrangements shall be constructed, maintained, and operated to minimize the possibility of fire emergencies requiring the evacuation of occupants. They go on to say that because the safety of personal care home residents or residents of the community living arrangements cannot be adequately ensured by dependence on evacuation of buildings, their protection from fire shall be provided by all things as, including detection, alarm, and extinguishment systems. And it's also, it's also in the IBC, residential personal care homes are allowed, or personal care homes are allowed to exist in residential districts, provided that they are in compliance with IRC, which is a sprinkler mandate.
So you're saying that you would have to sprinkle your home in a residential area? Because the state says an extinguishing system.
An extinguishing.
So that extinguishing system does not have to be a sprinkler.
Well, in our interpretation, we're saying that it's a sprinkler.
Right.
Right.
So Brad, what, what they're doing is, we're saying that if it's in, if you, if I have a personal care home, and I'm bringing in three elderly people, then I've got to sprinkle my home. Where the state says, I just have to have an extinguishing system or a plan. So I just want, if it's in a residential area, and it's less than three, or if the square feet is so many, I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
I just think we need to address that.
Well, we'll definitely take a look at it.
Okay.
And, and make sure we're, we're doing, and make sure we do have the, you know, the interest in, of the citizen and the, the elderly in hand.
I'm thinking about that, because as this population of Henry County ages, people are not going to be able to afford to put their elderly in an assisted living facility. Maybe it's, you know, a neighbor on the street that keeps three people. Now, you're telling that neighbor that in order for her to keep our aging parents, that she's got to sprinkle her home. But the state says that she can have that three or more personal care home as long as she has an extinguishing system, not sprinkler, in that home, and as long as they're able to move around. So I just don't want us to, as this community age, I want us to make sure that people are able to do that. Now, the other thing is that we catch that by not having a, a business license in a residential area. So it's not like people are going to be opening up these in their residential areas. So we cover it there.
We actually do, Commissioner. That's one of the things we're working on also. One of our number one threats in Henry County, we've had to actually intervene in several the last two years of people unlicensed that just break people in a home. And that's one of the things is, just want to make sure it's safe and make sure we're doing the, doing the right thing. But we'll definitely go back, look at that, and bring another recommendation back, or make a recommendation back from, from us. But we do feel.
I'm with you, Captain Black. You know, I'm, I'm all about the safety, but I just want to make sure that either we capture it in the business license, because they can't have it in a residential area, or we have to put something in this fire language, because it may be one area where somebody has two or three acres, and maybe they're in an agricultural area.
Now, this, this ordinance, just to clarify, it does only address the licensed personal care homes. Because the ULDC, Henry County ULDC allows licensed personal care homes to be in residential areas.
That's right.
So these are the only ones we're focused. We're not saying.
So that means that they would have to sprinkle their residence.
Exactly, because they're licensed businesses. We're not talking about.
If they're a business, not just taking somebody in to help them out, or a family member.
Well, it is a business, because the, I'm telling you that the state now wants elderly people in homes with people, not in, not in a institution. So we, we really have to look at this again.
Okay. We'll, we'll go back and look at it.
Okay.
And we'll get with you and then.
But make sure we get, you know, the, the fire thing done, but I just want to make sure that if, if it's a residential or, you know, three people in, you know, two people at a house, that we can, they don't have to sprinkle their home.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Wilson.
Chief, I noticed in your language, you looked at total sprinkle like attics, and you looked at, you also mentioned breezeways. But I didn't see in the language, I'm pretty sure it's in, in the ordinance itself, about utility chasers and utility closets. That would be sprinkled as well, correct?
Yeah, the, well, the closets and even the balconies are already covered in the fire codes. And the language in these ordinances closely mirrors that of the city of McDonough. They've had fire sprinklers and alarms in place for years. There's also similar language for, in the ordinance for Cab County, City of Atlanta, Cobb County. So we put a lot of research into this. I know it seemed like a rather lengthy ordinance change, but a lot of it was just the language cleaning up over the years. The biggest part of it was the sprinklers, as well as the alarm protection portion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then I'll just, you're done, I'm sorry. You're done. Okay. Could you go back to that language regarding special events and the potential for needing additional resources if an event is going to require an impact? Can you?
Yes, ma'am.
Pull that up? And I was just trying to get a clarification about what are we requiring individuals to do specifically if they, again, are holding a major, big event that may require resources? I wasn't clear about what we're going to require them to do.
All right. The section at the bottom where it talks about Fire Watch and extra duty, there's a, all this is coming out of the International Fire Code, okay? Based on the authority having jurisdiction, Fire Watch primarily talks about, or is related to your, your industry, your commercial businesses, where the fire extinguisher systems are in place, something happens, and there's no longer protection. They're required to make sure that someone is available for Fire Watch, and their only job is to report the occurrence. Now, that definition doesn't necessarily transfer over to some of our larger events that we have in, in the county, including our movie, our movie industry, or Imagine Fest. Imagine Fest is probably the best example. There's a section in the Fire Watch that talks about, or the International Fire Code that talks about the authority having jurisdiction. We're supposed to monitor this, and depending on the impact that that event could have on our local resources, then we work with them to make sure that they have a safety plan, and that our public safety is part of that plan. And that also includes the additional staffing for crowd control and management, which is already in the fire codes. So what we're doing is we're building that relationship. Now, the Fire Department has a longstanding internal policy where when we, where reserve equipment or our personnel, all that is at, at no cost to the county, all that comes from the, the individuals bringing in the event. And we also put that in there, because it's never been in there that way. They were upfront, transparent on everything that we're doing. But basically, what we're doing is we're trying to, this, this, this section is going to allow us to be proactive, build those relationships, especially with those large promoters, and to make sure that what they're bringing into this county doesn't have a negative impact on our services.
Very. All right, thank you. Are any other questions or comments? Okay. Or hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Chair will make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'm going to second it for discussion.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second, and we're open now for discussion. You may begin, Commissioner Barr.
Yes. How are we going to handle this, Commissioner Clemmons?
If we could give us a time, we'll go back and research. If you want a table, Commissioners, we'll bring it back next meeting, and we can go in. And just to confirm that the state intent, to see what that was with them, and work on that, and we'll definitely work through. But we'll definitely bring it back, because this is important to.
And my only other question, how does McDonough handle that part?
I'm sorry?
How does McDonough handle the part that she was discussing?
McDonough, McDonough, I'm sorry, the city of McDonough has similar language when it talks about group homes, daycares, and care facilities. Also, the sections in the ordinance that we proposed that talk about square footage of buildings, there's several different markers, where it's ten thousand, six thousand. All that is similar language from the city of McDonough, and we conferred with them as well as we were doing this. They've been in place on their side for, I believe, well over ten years, and it, and I feel it's time that we come up, at least to that standard, and some other things that we put in there as well, to be proactive for the future. The language is, is there, similar.
Okay. Commissioner Clemmons.
And I, and I think, Brad, I think we should fix it first and then bring it back. And I like what you said, Captain Black, maybe it is a square feet. Maybe if your home is ten thousand square feet, or five thousand square feet, or thirty-five hundred square feet, then there's another requirement. But if your home is fifteen hundred square feet, I mean, that, that's a little different. So maybe we can sit down and look at what's, you know, what, how do you address that, if it's a, you know, some, a personal care home in a residential area, as well as, I still would like to see how McDonough is doing with the townhomes and that are simple fee townhomes and not multi-family rentals, you know, with that. So we need to look at those things, because if not, then we're going to prohibit ourselves from being able to come up to standards with new buildings and new dwellings that we should be looking for to come into the community. So I think it's great, but I would like to make sure we address those things before we just vote on it as is. So I think it's great, but I would like to make sure we address those things before we just vote on it as is.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll look back at Commissioner Wilson since you made the motion. Any comments you'd like to add?
Yes, ma'am. And we're talking about the personal care homes. I think we have to look at the mobility of the people that's actually staying in the care homes. So they depend on wheelchairs and walkers, that should be a different, we should look at that a different way. But they're able to remove themselves from a structure in a timely manner. So that also has to be evaluated. I don't know how we would do that, but, but we have to consider the safety of these people whether it's in a resident or in a care home or whether it's commercial, it don't matter. And the purpose of this code is for the safety of people staying in a structure. So that, that's my comments on that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you initiated a motion to approve as is, so you want to modify your motion?
Well, yes, ma'am. We, I'll modify, we will, I'll make a motion to table it at this time and look for maybe the next, how long do you think? The next meeting, we'll have something?
Right.
Okay, all right.
All right, so we have a motion to table and then?
Or a clarification.
Patrick, doesn't he have to, we have to make a motion to remove the initial?
No, a motion to table is an intervening motion which you can make basically at any time.
Okay, well, I'll second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
County clerk?
It was modified as a motion to table by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by District Three, vote 501.
All right, thank you. Okay, well, now moving to our next item, which is a discussion only and is regarding our development of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Annual Action Plan on Community Development. And we welcome up Ms. Sengio, our Community Development Director. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair and members of the board. As you all are very well aware, Henry County is a recipient of the Community Development Block Grant Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a prerequisite for continuing to receive those entitlement funds, Henry County is preparing its 2020 through 2024 Consolidated Plan. This is essentially an update to our previous plan. Previously, it was a three-year plan for 2017 through 2019. In preparation of the consolidated plan, we do have available on the county's website our needs assessment surveys. They are available for resident and stakeholders completion and submission to the County Community Development Office. In addition to that, we also have meetings scheduled to discuss with community representatives, agencies, households, and individuals specific needs in their community. The five-year plan as proposed will begin July 1, 2020, ending June 30 of 2024. In addition to this plan, we are preparing for the Annual Action Plan for FY 2020, which will be July 1, 2020 through June 30 of 2021. We are seeking to identify community development needs within the county. Again, the needs assessment forms are available for residents and stakeholders. There are two on the website, one specifically designed for agencies and organizations such as service providers. The second is more intended for individuals and households. A series of needs assessment meetings in addition to the surveys will be conducted throughout this month. There are approximately 10 meetings scheduled at various locations and times across the county. We're hoping that these locations and times will allow us to best facilitate opportunities for individuals, organizations, households, and property owners to come out and express the needs that either them themselves are aware of, the needs that they are experiencing, or just things that they've observed in the community. You all have been provided via email, PDFs of those needs assessments, as well as the actual meeting schedules. This is for discussion only.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Clemens?
Should the, should the organizations and service providers attend, can they attend any of them or attend the ones in the area that they're in?
They can attend any, whatever's most convenient for the individual.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, all right. Thank you. We appreciate the schedule.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now moving to the county attorney items. And the first one regarding the Henry County Record Service Policy was covered in the county manager's update, so there will be no item on that. And we'll now move into the next item, which is the Resolution Regarding the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So you will recall, a couple of meetings ago, I gave a really quick run-through of sort of what the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement will look like. And we have gotten to the point where we're ready to present almost all of it to you for approval. And I'll talk about the, the couple of little things that aren't quite ready for your vote. What I'm going to do, again, just like last time, is I'm going to run through all the different areas of service and tell you what, what they mean, what the strategy agreement will call for on each one of those. And I'm just going to do them in the order in which they'll appear that are, they're roughly alphabetical. So the first section deals with annexation. And what we're doing with respect to annexation is we're not having any separate agreements. We're just going to have our annexations governed by state law, and there's no cost sharing associated with annexations. The form you see on the right, the, this Georgia Community Affairs Form is what we call Form Twos. Those are the forms that we are required to submit to the Department of Community Affairs that outline each individual service. And I'll be running through those with you real quick. So the next service are building permits and inspections. And building permits and inspections will be handled through a special service district. In other words, Henry County will provide that service only in the unincorporated areas of Henry County. And to the extent that that service is provided by taxation, only residents in the unincorporated areas will pay a tax for that service. That service is primarily fee-funded by user fees. The next service are buildings and ground maintenance. That is what the service that takes care of our buildings and our grounds. That is assessed countywide. So every resident in the county, incorporated and or unincorporated, will pay it, pay a millage rate to support our efforts of maintaining our buildings and our grounds. The cities will, if they need to, tax their residents to maintain their city buildings and their city grounds. The next item deals with cemeteries. The reason that's included in there is we have a couple of cities that maintain city cemeteries. And that just makes clear that there's no county tax for those cemeteries. That each city that has a cemetery will support that either through a city tax or through user fees. The next item deals with city transport, city prisoners and transport. So city prisoners are transported to and from the jail by each of the cities. So if there's a jail, a city McDonough prisoner in the city jail, the city will typically transport that prisoner to the city jail. We handle city of Stockbridge's delivery of their inmates to their courts, if necessary. And we do that through an old agreement where they provided us with a vehicle. Next deals with city prisoners. Again, the sheriff of Henry County handles all of the city prisoners. And there is an accompanying intergovernmental agreement, which looks somewhat like this. There's actually two agreements. And you'll note, it's fairly small, but what we do is we collect, the sheriff collects $37.58 per day, per city inmate. And there's an accompanying bigger agreement that goes into that in more detail. And it talks about how that $37.58 is paid. There is a jail surcharge assessed on certain fines. So that jail surcharge goes straight to the sheriff. If the jail surcharge is not sufficient to cover that cost, then the sheriff would bill the cities. If it's too much money, the sheriff simply retains the additional money. The next service is code enforcement. Code enforcement is handled in Henry County in the unincorporated area by our code enforcement department. Each city has its own code enforcement department that handles that city's code enforcement. To, again, to the extent code enforcement is funded by taxation, it is, that millage rate is only assessed in the unincorporated areas. Next deals with the comprehensive plan. This is our comprehensive planning document that we revise every five or 10 years. And historically, we've tried to work with the cities on a joint comprehensive plan, and those efforts have kind of faded away as the cities have grown and the cities have gone in different directions. So we've acknowledged that. And the funding mechanism for our comprehensive plan will be, the county will fund its own comprehensive plan through the unincorporated areas of the county if taxation is necessary. Each city will be responsible to create their own. What we anticipate doing when it's time for everybody to adopt a comp plan is reach out to the cities and have a conversation to see if there's an opportunity for cost sharing. I think we did that last time. And McDonough joined with us, is my recollection. Is that? Oh, everybody did. Good. So that may happen again. We're just not going to mandate it right now. The next service is the coroner service. The coroner provides services countywide, and he is funded by all residents within the county, incorporated and unincorporated. Court security and service of process. The court security being the state court, superior court, magistrate court, and probate court is handled by our sheriff's department. Service of process for civil actions is handled by the sheriff's department. And every resident within the county, incorporated and unincorporated, pay a millage rate to support the sheriff. Courts, indigent defense within the municipalities. Each city, to the extent they are required to provide indigent defense services, is required to pay for it through their own funds. County funds don't go to support city indigent defense. We support our own indigent defense system through county millage rates. Detention and control of animals. We handle animal control countywide. And as a consequence, we both collect ad lorum taxes countywide if necessary, and that's how that service is funded. We have a Henry County Development Authority. That service is funded countywide by taxation and all residents throughout the county, incorporated and unincorporated. Development plan review, just like building department, is a service we provide only in the unincorporated areas. To the extent that service is funded by taxation, only unincorporated residents pay that taxation. We don't collect any tax from municipal residents. I think that service is primarily funded by user fees. Each of the cities, to the extent they have that service provided through their own funding mechanism. Next is economic development for municipalities. I believe Hampton, Locust Grove, McDonough, and Stockbridge all have their own economic development agencies. May have more than one agency, and each of those, each of those agencies are funded exclusively through city revenues. The county does not contribute any money to their individual economic agencies. Elections are broken down into two. Federal, state, and county elections are conducted, obviously, by our Board of Elections. And that service is funded by countywide taxation on all residents, municipal and unincorporated residents. Elections for city elections are funded exclusively by the cities, even though our Board of Elections conducts them, and there's an underlying agreement between the cities and our Board of Elections to accommodate those. It's basically, they reimburse us the total cost. We're going to be reworking that agreement in conjunction with redoing this, this plan. But the agreement that, we have typically done an agreement with each election. So when the election rolls around, we do an agreement for that specific election. We included electrical services because the city of Hampton has an electric service. We just need to make certain that there's no question that that service is provided exclusively by the city of Hampton. And city of Hampton funds it primarily through user fees. E911 is provided countywide. Every resident within the county pays a millage rate to support the E911 system to the extent it's supported by millage rates and not by other fees or surcharges. Emergency management likewise is funded by all taxpayers in the county, municipal, and unincorporated. Emergency medical services are provided countywide. They're provided in all of the cities, and they likewise will be funded by municipal and unincorporated taxpayers. The environmental health and health departments, that service is provided countywide, and it is likewise, to the extent we fund it, is funded by countywide taxes, including city residents. Fire services. Fire services are provided by Henry County in the unincorporated areas of the county, Stockbridge, Hampton, and Locust Grove. So we also provide supplemental fire services within the city of McDonough. And our funding mechanism for that is a little bit different. We have an intergovernmental agreement, and I pulled out the operative sections of that agreement. The way this section works is residents in the unincorporated area, Hampton, Locust Grove, and Stockbridge, will all pay a uniform millage rate to support the fire services. Residents in the city of McDonough will pay a millage rate equal to 45% of what the remaining residents in the unincorporated area pay, because we don't provide a full, we don't provide the full services. City McDonough has its own fire department. They provide some of the services. So the short version of that is, city McDonough residents will pay 45% of what unincorporated and the other city residents provide. And we basically have an automatic aid agreement in place with them. GIS and mapping services. Henry County provides that only in the unincorporated areas, although some of our mapping includes cities. But we provide those only for our use. We sometimes sell services to the cities if they want them, and there's a mechanism for that to take place. To the extent the cities have their own GIS and mapping departments, they're required to pay those through their individual funding sources. Housing authority. We included that one because the cities of Hampton and McDonough have housing authorities. We have to accommodate for all these services, and so we put that in there just to ensure that everyone understands that that is funded exclusively by Hampton and McDonough through whatever their funding sources are. Library services are provided countywide through the Henry County library system. There's no, there's no rollback. There's no millage adjustments there. To the extent the county funds them, that funding comes from countywide millage rates. Parks. Park construction and maintenance. So the way we've handled parks in the past has been a little confusing, and it may remain that way a little bit. But the way we'll be handling parks is every resident in the county, including residents within the cities, will pay a millage rate to operate, maintain, and construct our parks. And our park, when we refer to our parks, we're referring to parks that the county owns or parks that a city might own that we operate. And there are a few parks in McDonough and Locust Grove that the city owns, but we operate. And we'll be identifying all those parks in a separate intergovernmental agreement. We are awaiting some lists on those specific parks, so that intergovernmental agreement will come later. So when I ask you to approve, if I ask you to approve something today, we won't be approving the park section until we get all of those, all of those lists where everybody's agreed on them. I don't think there's any dispute on them. We just haven't gotten all those lists together just yet. My recollection is, and y'all know all the parks, the only park in, the only cities that have parks that we own are Locust Grove and McDonough. We don't own any parks in either, Colley Park. We own Colley Park. Colley Park in Hampton and the park, we're all aware of the parks at Warren Holder Park. Cochrane Park in Stockbridge, that's right. But we own those, we operate those. And we have a, an additional funding mechanism. Each city that adopts an impact fee for recreation purposes will agree to pay half of their impact fee for recreation to the county to supplement our impact fees. So we will be receiving some additional funding from the cities to acknowledge the fact that we're running parks within those cities and that those, that their growth within the city impacts our need to provide parks. We collect a park impact fee in the unincorporated area, but we don't collect any impact fee in the cities because we can't. But the cities will collect an impact fee and pay half of theirs to us. They have to choose their own impact fees. We can't dictate to them the impact fees because the law wouldn't allow it. The law requires your impact fee to be based on math and science. You have to determine what is the impact and collective fee accordingly. Planning and zoning, like building permits and development plan review, is provided only in the unincorporated area by the county. So it's funded only by, to the extent it's funded by ad lorum taxes and not by application fees. It is funded only by unincorporated residents. Likewise, city planning and zoning services are funded only by the cities and their revenue sources. Police services is one that we've all, we've all beaten to death. As you are aware, the Henry County Police Department provides police services in the unincorporated area and in the city of Stockbridge. So there will be a special service district that covers the unincorporated area and the city of Stockbridge. All of those residents will pay a millage rate to support the Henry County Police Department. The services will be provided uniformly, as if there is no boundary between the city and the county. The other cities have their own police departments, and they will not pay an ad lorum tax towards our police services. We also have a mutual aid agreement written into our overall agreement. So we will be providing mutual aid to each of the cities. They'll be providing it to us. If we need their help, they pick up, we pick up the phone and call. If we need their help, they pick up, we pick up the phone and call them. If they need ours, we pick, they pick up the phone and call us. And we agree to provide assistance when we can. And so, that section of the police agreement talks about the mutual aid that we'll be entering into with each one of the cities. We have an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Stockbridge written into this agreement as well. And that agree, that agreement says that we will provide cert, police services within the city of Stockbridge on the same basis that we provide them in the unincorporated area. The agreement's terminable. We can terminate it when we, when, when we require, require substantial notice because if we were to terminate the agreement, obviously, they would have to start up their own police services. So, that's, that exists because it's required to exist. We can't provide police services in another jurisdiction without an agreement. We also have a mutual aid agreement, a specific mutual aid agreement between us and the city of McDonough. We're working to see if we're going to do a separate agreement with the other cities, with Locust Grove and Hampton. There's nothing magic about this. It simply says we're, we've got a mutual aid agreement in place for police services. Next service deals with fleet vehicles, equipment, petroleum, and supplies. Henry County collects ad lorum taxes countywide to handle our vehicles. Senior citizen services. We provide senior citizens services throughout the county. We collect ad lorum taxes to support that countywide. Our transit and senior transit services, again, are provided countywide. We collect, to the extent that's funded by ad lorum taxes, we collect a countywide tax. Soil erosion and control is one of those services that we provide in the unincorporated areas. City provide in their areas. To the extent it's funded by taxes, we only collect taxes in the unincorporated areas. The cities collect their own revenue sources. Solid waste likewise. Uh, the, to the extent we have a solid waste program in place, which we, we have a solid waste management plan in place. We don't do, you know, curbside pickup, obviously. But that service is provided, unincorporated areas only. The cities provide their own. It's funded, unincorporated area and the cities fund their own. Roads and streets. This is one we're working on. Uh, the way the roads and streets agreement has evolved is that Henry County will collect a countywide ad lorum tax, that we will utilize that advertor, ad lorum tax to take care of roads and streets that are the county's responsibility. For the most part, the county's responsibilities are those that are outside of the city limits. But there are some streets within the city limits that we are going to acknowledge really are county roads. Either they pass through or there's a very short section in the, in the city, or it's simply a, a road that we just acknowledge as a county road. We are working on that list right now, so we're not going to ask you to adopt this portion of the SDS agreement until that's resolved. There are some other differences. That's why that one is blank. There are some other minor differences we're working through, things that essentially require our public works director and the city's public work directors to meet periodically to identify projects that maybe need to be done by one or the other or jointly. Those aren't particularly problematic, but we want to make sure that we are taking on roads and streets that we should be taking on and we're not taking roads and streets that the cities don't want to mess with. So, we're working through that right now and we'll have that brought back to you when it's finalized. Next, the stormwater management. Stormwater management in the unincorporated areas is handled by the Henry County Stormwater Management Department. Within the cities, it's handled by their own, their own funding sources and their own city departments. Vehicle equipment and maintenance is handled countywide by county, countywide sources, funding sources, including millage rates. So, those twenty-some-odd Form twos are attached to our, what we call our SDS agreement. And our SDS agreement basically says, we've agreed on these twenty-some, twenty-some items that are attached as Exhibit A, and that forms our SDS agreement. There's a couple of other things in the SDS agreement that we put in there to sort of capture things that aren't quite covered by the Form twos. The primary thing we put in there is an overall mutual aid agreement that applies to all services. If we need a dump truck from the city of McDonough, city McDonough needs a dump truck for us, we're going to call, we're going to cooperate, we're going to help each other out while we can. So, we wanted to make sure we have a mutual aid agreement that covers all of that within the SDS agreement. And otherwise, it essentially captures all of the things that I just went through. Before we're done with this whole process, which hopefully is coming to a conclusion fairly quickly, we are going to adopt a joint resolution. We will all adopt the same resolution, us and all of the cities, that will all approve the same agreement. We're not quite there yet. We're almost there. What I'm asking the board to do is to approve, uh, it doesn't, you don't have to, um, I would like it by resolution, approve all of those SDS items with the exception of parks and roads and streets today. So, we can put those aside, put those on a shelf, and work on those last two. And I'm going to transmit those to the cities and see if they'll do the same. They may or may not. It's, it doesn't put us, it doesn't fix our SDS because until we get roads and streets and parks resolved, we would, don't have an overall SDS agreement. But it would be nice to get those out of the way so we can just focus on the two. So, that's the resolution I'm asking you to adopt today, is a resolution to adopt all of those SDS Form twos and the accompanying intergovernmental agreements with the exception of transportation, roads and streets, and park services.
Okay. All right. Well, we've heard the presentation and the request. Are any questions or comments? No? Okay. Well, um, again, the request for the resolution is to adopt the SDS as approved for the Form two with the exception of transportation, road, streets, and parks. So, if there are no other questions, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, just a question. Again, I know we're going to be working on those others over a period of time. So, do you have an idea of what those going to look like?
Well, we were working on those yesterday afternoon. We're hopeful, it's a matter of days. I mean, we, I feel like we're really, really close. We're down to some, we're, we're down to just a really small handful of issues. I don't want to bring the issues up now because I don't want to alert anybody that there's big problems. And I'm not sure that we've totally gone through all the new information we got, but we're, we're, it's imminent. This is not something that's going to drag out, unless we just can't resolve these little things. It's always possible that we can't resolve them. But I, I feel like we're really close to resolving everything. And if there's anything we can't resolve, we'll come back to the board and tell you we can't resolve it and we'll take whatever the appropriate next steps are.
Okay. We've had a motion seconded. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
We had a motion to approve by District Two, seconded by District Three. Vote five zero one.
Thank you. Okay. We'll now move into the next item regarding a resolution authorizing staff to draft an ordinance amendment addressing discharging, uh, discharging of firearms.
So, this item is, is really just for discussion. Uh, there was a request presented to the county manager to revisit our firearm ordinance to prohibit discharging of firearms in residential areas. That's my understanding what the request was. You have a package that has, uh, really three alternatives. And it starts off, the top one in your package is Section three dash, three dash four dash two oh seven of the Henry County Code, which makes it unlawful to discharge a firearm within Henry County if you are within fifty yards of a public road, two hundred yards of someone else's house, uh, within any residential zoned property except for RA zone property. Or you discharge the firearm in such a manner as to endanger anyone else's life, limb, or property. I'm going to put this up because I'm not sure. If it goes dark, I will touch it again. There are two options that have been formulated thus far, uh, really three options. The first option on the top up here, which is the existing county ordinance, proposes to expand the fifty yards from a public road to a hundred yards from a public road. It also proposes to require two hundred yards between where you discharge a firearm and any county or municipal recreational area. So, you can't shoot near a park. What, the next proposal was, I think, essentially taken from Clayton County's firearm, which prohibits the discharge of not only any gun, but also air rifles, I presume BB guns, slingshot, bow and arrow, within one thousand feet of any other residence, church, or business. Uh, the final, uh, final one was taken from Fayette County. And Fayette County has a lot of the same essential, a hundred yards from a roadway, two hundred yards from someone else's house, two hundred yards from a recreation area. And also would propose prohibiting the discharge of shotguns unless it's being done on a ten acre or larger parcel that is, or a parcel that is specifically approved for a planned retreat or lodge. These aren't intended to be comprehensive. These aren't intended to be one of the things you must adopt. These are the things we've started to have this discussion. So, if we, if we think that the discharge of firearms is a problem, obviously, if, if you're on the wrong end of the discharge of a firearm, it's absolutely a problem. And there's also the noise that goes with it and the, the things that go along with it can be really disturbing. We want to address it if the board wants to address it, but we want to address it in the way the board sees. So, we've, we've come up with these. There are a few things that these proposals don't really, don't really address, one of which is, um, how do we deal with the differing type of residential properties? And I mentioned this to a couple of commissioners before. We have property that is zoned residential agricultural that is used as a residential subdivision. We also have property zoned residential agriculture that is used for agricultural purposes. We have property in this county that is leased for hunting purposes. I'm presuming that property is almost certainly zoned to the RA zoning designation. There are, I don't know if we have any established businesses like shooting clubs or where they do target shooting or skeet and trap shooting, but I would, I would bet that throughout this county, there are at least private facilities where people may have put those in their yards. You want to make sure whatever you do makes sense. A, a blanket prohibition on discharging a firearm in residential districts would essentially limit discharging firearms to commercial districts. And I don't think we want people shooting guns in commercial districts. Um, I think if you did a blanket authorization to allow it in RA zoning districts, you might unintentionally allow it in RA subdivisions. So, I do think we have to really think through this and take some time with it to make sure we capture all of these unintended consequences. And I think the, you know, the most important thing, anytime you're talking about firearms, is to ensure public health and safety. So, any version of any ordinance we have is going to have a provision that makes it unlawful to discharge a firearm in any way that jeopardizes anyone else's life or property. We will include that. So, if somebody, even if they're two hundred yards or whatever the appropriate distance from your house is and they shoot at your house, we're going to make sure that's, we're going to make sure that's a violation. If, um, and, and I think the thing the board needs to tell us is where, where and how are the discharge of firearms appropriate and where and how do the board feel that the discharge of firearms are inappropriate? We've got some folks here who may be able to help us. Pam Bettis, the Solicitor General is here. Um, she's the Solicitor General, obviously, and they handle the prosecution of these for the county. So, she's come, she can add her insight. I think the police chief is still here. He knows more about shooting guns than I know and probably knows more about the enforcement arm than I know. So, we also, they're here. They may have something to add or they may want to wait for questions. Ms. Bettis is nodding her head. Let's bring her up. So, uh, that's, that's the reason we've gotten to the point we've gotten. Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Holmes has a question, but you can, come on up, please.
So, I don't like any of these approaches and, um, definitely a blanket approach will not work in Henry County. We have areas that are, that are rural. We have areas that are, um, that are becoming urbanized and, um, my community is, is one of them. Um, I told, um, uh, you guys about a citizen who reported seeing a bullet come through her window and landed in her kitchen while her and her husband were sitting at the table, uh, I think about a month ago. And, um, I told you that, um, I, you know, I'm in my house sometime with my grandchildren and I, and I hear these guns just pow, 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 pow. And they sound like they're right down the street and I know they're not that close. Um, so, when you look at, um, these distance, three hundred yards, two hundred yards, one hundred yard, that makes absolutely no sense, um, when you have a residential area, um, close to these areas where people are firing, um, firing, um, firearms. So, I think, um, what needs to happen is, um, we need to look at ordinances from, you know, more urban counties, maybe DeKalb, Fulton. And for the, um, the southern, more rural areas, you know, this may work, but it doesn't work in the area that I represent, from Fairview to, um, to Jonesboro.
Okay. Um, so, any other comments, Commissioner Holmes? Okay. Um, see Commissioner Clemens, and then we still welcome to hear from you. Commissioner Clemens?
Yes, I'm, um, waiting to hear from you, chief, and, um, our Solicitor General, Ms. Bettis as well. But I know that, um, it's really about ensuring the public health and safety because I know that some residents may back up. So, it may be a RA resident that backs up to a new subdivision that just came in, that's R three. So, that's going to be an issue because even though their property is on RA, it will directly butt to, um, a residential zone. So, we need to make sure whatever we do, that it's more about distance from house to house and not zoning. And I think that will probably help, uh, with, with Commissioner Holmes is, uh, attempting to do here. And thank you, Commissioner Holmes, for bringing this, um, discharge of firearms resolution before us finally. It, it, it's not a week go by that I don't see something on Nextdoor Neighbor saying, "Did you hear the gunshots?" And so, we've got to figure out, how do we make sure that, um, it's unlawful in Henry County?
Okay. Um, Commissioner Wilson?
I think some of the issues that we're having, especially down in my area, is the irresponsibility of gun owners. We have to make sure the gun owner is responsible where the bullet goes, right? So, bullets can travel four miles. So, there's no way that we can confine that bullet on a piece of property. So, I think what we have to look at, number one, Commissioner Holmes, look at his concerns. But when you look down in my area, chief, you've, you've had a couple of, uh, your department had a couple of run-ins with one guy that lives on several acres, but there's a subdivision that backs up to his home, like Commissioner Clemens. But the bottom line is, is the responsibility of the gun owners. What do we do with that? Uh, I know y'all fixing to talk about how we prosecute that, but when we're talking about a bullet travels four or five miles, it, if it does any type of property damage or if it takes someone's life or body harm, that, I get, I know that's, y'all handle it in different ways, but I think that, the responsibility of the gun owners, I think is where we need to start.
And I'd, I'd like to add, there's, there's really two issues i- in play here. I mean, there's a lot of issues, but the primary two issues are looking at the harm that we want to address. And I think there's two elements of harm. There's the bullets, obviously, and there's also the noise. And it's easier to regulate someone discharging a firearm and, and make sure the bullet goes in the direction into a berm, into something like that. You can't regulate noise. You know, that noise is probably going to travel in every direction. And so, you know, we can probably easier address, even though we can't stop a bullet, but we can put into, we can put into place things, force them to have a berm behind their chute, force them to, you know, shoot downward. There's a lot of things you can do. Noise is going to be another problem. And I think the only way to address noise is distance. So, that's just something I want to make sure that we, we keep in mind. The same solution may not solve a noise problem as solves a bullet problem. So, I'm going to let them talk and get out of the way.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Holmes got a point and then we're going to let them come forward and because I, they're sure there's going to be more discussion.
I know the noise problem is definitely an issue because, um, I have two granddaughters. And whenever they hear those gunshots, I mean, they sound like they're right across the street. And they immediately, we immediately take cover because we don't know if something's going to come through the house or not. So, there definitely needs to be something done with the distance. Right here, you says, uh, you say, uh, Clayton County, um, is a thousand seat, a thousand feet from, from a residential area. That's three hundred and thirty yards. Johnny just said a bullet can travel four to five miles. That makes no sense to me. So, hopefully, we can figure something out and figure something out soon before somebody gets hurt.
Okay. All right. We welcome you to come forward. I'm sure there'll be more discussion.
When I was approached to, uh, work on an ordinance, uh, assist with an ordinance, I looked at the three options and each of those had some issues along with our current ordinance. So, I tried to craft this fourth option, which includes the paragraph, um, paragraph one, it includes and/or in such a manner as to endanger another person's life, limb, or property. So, one of the issues I think we have in consideration that you may want to discuss is we do have, um, hunters that are still hunting in the county and the more rural areas. Um, so, a thousand feet is a, is a number that gives them a distance from a home or a dwelling. But you're not, I mean, if they're irresponsible, th- it doesn't matter what footage we use. What we're trying to do is keep it, you know, in a more rural area where it's What we're trying to do is keep it, you know, in a more rural area where it's safer. There is a case that may help for you to look at, that we had to prosecute recently that involves another aspect of the, of our current ordinance that did not include churches. And so I also made sure that this, this proposal included churches. We had some Boy Scouts camping behind a church and, you know, having Boy Scout activities. And a young woman who had just recently received her gun permit was on her property and was firing her nine millimeter pistol. And when those rounds went off, she was firing in a safe direction, she was firing in a, in a safe manner, she had a buffer. The problem was she did not know that there were Boy Scouts there in tents and they scattered, were corralled into the church and no one was harmed. But we had to consider all of the different measurements because of our ordinance. And this is our, our ordinance and you can see how the prosecutor had to work through our current ordinance. First, we have to determine how far away it is from the roadway. Then we only had dwelling house of another, so do we argue as a prosecutor that this is the house of the Lord? Because she was within so many yards of the, of the church? And, you know, then we ultimately settled on the one paragraph that captured what the case was about. That she was operating her firearm in a manner that endangered life, limb, or property in that because the boys had to scatter and the manner they did, they could have been injured. And her attorney thankfully worked with us and worked with the church to determine when that would be safe. So one of the suggestions if, while you're thinking of this ordinance and thinking of changes would be a universal number for the distance. So that an officer is not out on the side of the road or on a piece of property having to, to guess yardage or, or having to measure when they have calls holding and other, other calls they have to respond to. But also to include all of the building variables, not just dwelling homes, but businesses and churches. And then of course, you know, the basic right to, to bear arms in our Second Amendment and those of hunters and the more rural districts. And so there's a lot you have to consider. And of course, I'm willing to work with you in any way we need to, to, you know, draft some type of ordinance that assists and makes you feel safe and your children safe in your homes.
Okay, just a couple of, of comments I'd like to make. One, apparently the current, you know, ordinance we have is definitely outdated and I'm glad that we are talking about it. And I do like the recommendations that you're bringing forward regarding distance, especially for safety. And the issue also has already been stated is that we are, you know, again, transitioning from rural to more urban and, you know, houses that are around with children and families and even more churches as well. So I, I, I kind of like the direction that you're here, that you're leading us towards. Definitely look forward to what other recommendations that you're going to have. But, you know, thinking about some of the concerns that have been stated about gunshots and things like that in communities. You know, that is something that our police department is, you know, we need help from the, the community when we're hearing of these things. And if at all possible to, to definitely engage our police to investigate it. And I know some communities are even doing neighborhood watches as well as we continue to, again, focus on safety. So my thoughts are, I, I kind of, I like the direction that you're heading towards because it helps us to update where we are. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
On the one that you had, was it a thousand feet or a thousand yards?
A thousand feet.
And I don't know what that is to, a thousand feet to two hundred yards.
Three hundred and thirty-three yards.
Okay, a thousand, a thousand feet is how many yards?
Three hundred and thirty yards.
So it's extending, we, the current ordinance is two hundred yards.
Right.
So this would extend it to three hundred and thirty yards. So I'm, I, I think the lesser yards is better. So I don't agree with Chairman that the thousand feet giving more yards. I think lesser yards.
Well, that means they have to be
Further away.
A thousand feet further away from the home.
Further away.
Yeah. Mr. Holmes has a hunting property.
That's why I'm asking, what is a yard? Okay.
Yeah, so.
And the other thing is that I want to make sure, and this is not, not about what you're saying, but I want to make sure that the public understands that this is not about, you know, the right to bear arms. Because we all, I mean, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I agree that everybody should have the right to bear arms, but I don't think that you have the right to discharge anywhere you want to. So I want to make sure that the public understands this because people will construe this and make it seem like that we're talking about the right to bear arms. This is not what this is about. This is really about the right to discharge, where you should be discharging or the freedom to just discharge wherever. So I just want to be clear on that. So thank you.
And I will speak for Ms. Bettis on this, like any other criminal statute, it, it would be subject to defenses, including self-defense. If someone lives on a, you know, tenth of an acre or lives in an apartment building and they discharge their firearm in self-defense, they're not subject to prosecution. So.
Language gets out. Because we're, we're, we're going to have to deal with this. But I just want to be clear that this is not about, you know, the right to bear arms amendment, it's more about discharging.
When we look at those cases as well, when you're analyzing it from an officer's perspective or a prosecutor's perspective, if we have someone, which we did have a young lady several years ago that was firing a nine millimeter, it went through the target and hit a school bus. And so, you know, she had a setup she thought was safe and a lot of that's education. So all of our recommendations when we're talking with a citizen who may be charged with this violation include a fire safety, firearm safety class, which they can get through the Department of Natural Resources or through police officers who give that instruction at various firearms, you know, locations, target ranges and things of that nature. And they provide an hour to two hour long safety class that talks about firearm safety. And years ago, to have a hunting license, you had to attend the DNR Hunting Safety Course, which talked about safety and proper handling of a firearm.
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to say, because I've gone through that firearm safety training and also the women's defense training as well. And those are really good training courses that are offered for those that are caring. So thank you.
And I would again say this is not about caring firearms. I want us to make sure that this conversation stays on discharging weapons in residential areas that put people's lives in danger and not about permits, firearms. I just don't want us to, to construe that or start having that conversation.
Yep, very good point. And I agree with you. Very good. Okay, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson?
I noticed some of the language includes within a thousand feet of a business, but we've got to be careful not to include a business that are indoor ranges. So we'll make sure we don't exclude them guys from, you know, putting them out of business. So I think we've got two in the county, is that right, Chief? Two indoor ranges?
Yeah, and I think they're both in the city. This is only for unincorporated.
Okay.
But yeah, there have to be some common sense language. Obviously, an indoor range would be a secure place to shoot a firearm.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear your question.
Why not just go to the indoor range?
Right.
Why would you want to shoot a hundred yards outside?
Well, I think what Commissioner Wilson was talking about, the, the language says within a thousand feet of business. If the business is an indoor range, would that make it illegal? I think that's what you just said, right?
It's three hundred and thirty-three yards, so you should be able to walk to the business, to the range.
Yeah, Commissioner Wilson, you've got the floor, so you just need to clarify.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the language, but you, like Chief pointed out, those two ranges inside the city limits, so it's nothing to do with this ordinance. So he made it clear. So thank you, Chief.
And something else we may want to think about is, I think there's, there are people that just walk outside occasionally and shoot their guns. And then there may be hunting grounds. There may be areas that are leased to hunters that are active areas where people hunt. And you may want to, you may want to have some different regulation for the hunting areas and some different regulation for the individuals that just walk out in the backyard and shoot a gun. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what they'd be, what they would be, but there may be some, something to, that you want to make sure that if this property is leased for hunting purposes, there's some notice to adjoining landowners so they know. You know, in Georgia, there's a thing called the Right to Farm Act, that if I own a farm and a subdivision comes in next to me, then I can continue to farm even if my farm might create some inconvenience to my neighbors. There's no such thing as a right to shoot my gun off in, in the backyard law. And there probably shouldn't be, but there may be some instances where you want to have some of these really large rural properties where people know, hey, this is, this is a place where people hunt or this is a place where there's a gun range. And maybe you don't want to live there. That may be, that may be something that we look at as well. Just some sort of a public notice that this is an area where people are routinely discharging firearms.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Holmes, did you have any additional comments? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I mean, I'm sorry. I think we need to identify those hunting areas, outdoor gun ranges areas. Because what happens is adjacent to them may be a hundred acres, there's going to be a subdivision. And so if we don't have it in our system where they're coming to us annually to renew their permits to have that, then again, we can catch that there because it's going to have, you know, as we grow as a county, people are selling their land now and they're, and they're selling it for businesses or residential. So if a gun range is there now, who's to say that six months from now, we don't have a developer that comes and want to put a subdivision right there? So we got to look at that as well. So maybe, I don't know if that's going to come from a business license perspective or what. But we need to identify where they are in the county. That would be easy because we shouldn't have a whole lot of them. To identify where they are and then make sure that we address that as well.
Well, some of them are not businesses. So you may have an individual who moves here from a more urban environment, purchases fifteen, twenty acres, ten acres to set up a skeet shooting range that involves clay, you know, targets. So this ordinance would keep them from setting that up within, you know, so many yards of the home if they back up to a subdivision. So if someone's hunting the property for deer, you know, you wouldn't want them to put their deer stand right at the backyard of, of a person's home in a subdivision. So if they have ten or twenty acres, then they have to look around, assess their landscape and put that deer stand within a thousand feet of those, those residences and operate that weapon in a safe manner. And there's never a guarantee within ordinance that even with that, that they're going to operate in a safe manner.
Yes, so I think what we have to do at this point is get like the other urban communities and not allow that in the county. I think, you know, county manager, we need to look at that because what's happening is we can't, we got to get to a point where we're not allowing new ones to come in at this point. Because they can come in today and like I said, somebody can buy the land next door to it tomorrow and then it's a residence. And I think a lot of the urban communities now just don't allow hunting anymore. I mean, we're not, you know, wherever they are, they are. But we got to look at that, you know, as we grow. You know, how do we do that? So thank you. Yeah, like you're saying, Ms. Bettis, some of them just buying land for that, but we can stop that from allowing the use.
Well, they, they, they may buy it. I mean, you have a, you know, there's a general interest in weapons and guns, you know. And they're safe operators. It's normally like Commissioner Wilson said, it's individuals that simply are not informed when they purchase the weapon and don't have the basic firearms training. So there's people who, this is a, a sport, this is how they literally live their marriage around hunting season. And there's each one, there's, you know, deer, turkey, you know, all of them where they hunt during those seasons. And that's their hobby, you know, like some people ride bicycles or run. So I don't know how to.
We don't need it no more in Henry if we've got, we're building. So that, I understand that. I, I totally get that. But they got to go further south if we've got urban growth coming and residents coming in the area.
All right, Commissioner Holmes?
So the sound I hear up in my area is not the sound of a shotgun or a hunting rifle. I hear a semi-automatic. So I think everybody knows the difference between a rifle and a semi-automatic handgun or shotgun. The sound I hear is pow, 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 pow. It's not a rifle, that's not a hunting rifle.
And there's some uses we can regulate away, which I think is what Commissioner Clemmons is referring to. And Commissioner Holmes, I think what you're referring to are just those users, we have to catch them and prosecute them. So I mean, there, you know, you've got, you've, you've got establishments where people go to shoot guns and then you got people that just shoot guns. And the people that just shoot guns are probably, we're probably going to have to address them with a punitive provision like this. And the establishments, we can address with a more regulatory scheme to try to either put them in the right place or impose regulations on them that make sure they're safe. So I think we, it's probably going to have to be, we're probably going to have to do more than just this one paragraph.
You guys mentioned training and awareness and those things, but we have school shootings and mass shootings all over the country. Many of those people that commit those crimes are people who, who took training, who are very skilled at shooting. So, you know, I don't know if that is an excuse to not act on this. I think we need to move forward with this ordinance. And, you know, again, we have areas in the county where, where you should be able to, to hunt and, and shoot. And you have areas that, where we're experience, experiencing significant growth where we should consider the people that have bought real estate in those areas.
Well, I'm thinking about an ordinance, you always want to make it so that it, the officers understand how to enforce it and the citizens understand the ordinance and that they have enough time to learn about the ordinance and be aware. So we can look, we can go back to the drawing board to assess if there's some way to put in a demarcation in the county or something for hunting or target shooting.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, so this was a discussion only, pretty much?
Yes, discussion only.
Okay. All right, okay. Well, we thank you and thank you Solicitor General and Chief for being here as well. So.
We didn't hear from my chief, but I can talk to you later about how many calls are you getting about people's discharging firearms?
Well, why don't you come on back then?
Daily.
Day, say it again, I want to hear it loud.
Daily.
Daily. So I don't, you know, this is a discussion, but it doesn't need to take too long before we bring this back because it could be today that a dis, that is discharged again and somebody gets hurt. So I don't think this is something we can keep putting off. I didn't have a problem with what the Solicitor presented to us. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't reduce the two hundred yards to extensive and y'all handled that. So I don't know.
I looked at it just from an enforcement point of view. There's three options. Yes, the police can enforce that. It's truly up to you guys. I did like what the Solicitor presented. The thousand feet, it definitely increased the distance already. And most of those subdivisions, you're not going to be a thousand feet away. It's be almost impossible to shoot within those subdivisions. The other thing I liked that made it one distance, the old policy, the old ordinance, you know, so far away from a road, so far away from a house, so far away from a neighbor. This gave you one measurement that my cops would have to know. All right, my, within a thousand feet of anything and then we're done with. But that definitely covered a lot and it, it increased the distance. I don't think my guys would have any problem enforcing it.
Well, can you put it back up there again, Solicitor, what you were recommending?
And I would like to hear Commissioner Holmes, what were you saying about the distance?
Okay.
And it's true like Commissioner Wilson said.
Wait, 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 okay, so, okay, so, okay, so we're in discussion. So Commissioner Holmes, go ahead, please.
So you had, you had three examples. Two examples were measured in yards, one hundred and twenty. And so, and this one is measured in feet. So a thousand feet is actually three hundred and thirty yards. So it's only a hundred and thirty yards more than the proposed ordinance or the proposed language in the other ordinance.
So you want more yards?
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Chair, before you move on, I'm going to make one more comment. Sherry and I were talking, County Manager and I were talking. You know, there might be areas in the county where even though there's a big vacant area, it might still be inappropriate under any circumstances to be discharging firearms. We might want to look at a prohibition against discharging firearms in an area where the density is greater than some number of residents per square mile or something, which is going to be hard to enforce, but GIS can spit that out in a moment. I don't know what that number needs to be. But you know, if you've got forty-two apartment complexes surrounding a twenty acre site, you probably don't want anybody discharging firearms on that twenty acres at all. Whereas if you've got a twenty acre site surrounded by five acre lots, you might not care. So, you know, I think maybe there is a, these distances I think matter, but there might also be areas that just are so developed, so urban, that discharging any firearm, even if you can reach those limits, might be inappropriate. And we'll, we'll work on something like that and I expect it'll be planning and zoning, have to work and GIS and obviously I'll speak to these two folks, they know more, they're going to be the ones enforcing it. So that's something we might want to look at.
Right. And, and yes, Commissioner Holmes, she still has the floor?
Another thing we need to think about is the new Greenway Trail. I mean, so that's on a lot of acres. You'll have people, you know, walking and riding bikes through the Greenway Trail. And if somebody is hunting or shooting in that area, you know, there, there, there is a, an opportunity for, you know, a casualty. So we need to evaluate that as well.
Okay, and I think what I keep hearing as well, we're all concerned about safety, definitely want to look at this, but make sure we come back sooner than later. So, all right, thank you. Okay. Well, we thank you for those updates again. And so now we'll move into our next, um, agenda item by the county manager. She comes forward and this is regarding a resolution pertaining to Connecting Henry. And I see we've got some Connecting Henry, um, representatives out there as well, so we'll let you begin.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Um, before you use a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners rescinding Resolution Number Fifteen dash forty pertaining to Connecting Henry. Um, back in twenty fifteen, there was a resolution that was approved by a previous board, um, regarding how Connecting Henry would be recognized, um, within the county organization. Um, at that time, prior to twenty fifteen, the executive director made the decision that Connecting Henry would be a separate, um, department and agency outside of the prevy, of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners would no longer serve as a fiscal agent. And then in twenty fifteen, the executive director came back, or a different executive director came back to the board and asked for the board to not only serve as a fiscal agent, but for Connecting Henry to be classified as a county department. Um, if you all will recall, and I don't remember which board meeting, it may have been two board meetings ago, um, the chair of their board, um, came before the board and gave a brief update on some of the activities with Connecting Henry, but specifically talked about an amendment to their bylaws and some regulations that they had to amend to remain in compliance with the grants that they were receiving. Um, as a result, they did amend their bylaws to no longer, um, allow the Board of Commissioners to appoint board members to Connecting Henry. And then they amended their bylaws where the county manager is no longer responsible for the appointment of an executive director, nor longer, nor will the county be the fiscal agent for any grant funds that are being received by Connecting Henry. In light of that information, um, what we have before you is a resolution to just outline that and specifically to make the board aware what those changes are. Now, the resolution that's being presented is very clear in that it will state the Henry County Board of Commissioners shall no longer have official authority over Connecting Henry and will be a separate organization by which no general fund allocations, resources, or supervising authority from the Henry County Board, Henry County Board of Commissioners will be permitted. Now, just for clarification, Henry County currently does not provide any general fund dollars to Connecting Henry. We're simply a pass-through for grant funds that they do receive. And so that would, in this resolution, I spelled that out just so the board would be clear that we do not have general fund dollars that currently are being, um, provided to Connecting Henry. But most specifically, that Connecting Henry will no longer be a Department of Henry County Government. Now, what that means is that there are benefits that we have afforded to their employees, um, as a department, more specifically our, um, Employee Wellness Center and any other activities, um, that have been afforded to any other agencies that are classified as departments. And so what this resolution will do is separate them completely from the county by way of their amendment to their bylaws and by way of Henry County no longer being a fiscal agent for Connecting Henry. Um, I'll be more than happy to try to answer any questions that you all may have regarding the resolution.
Okay, we've heard the presentation, I know I've got a question. Um, um, so let me start and then I'll let Commissioner Clemens come. So they are currently in the facility as well, is that correct? So that is, how is that managed and handled? And then I got another question as well.
So that is actually a part of the letters that went out to all of the agencies regarding lease agreements and contracts. Um, Connecting Henry did receive a letter, as did D-Fax, Friends House, the Haven House, regarding the current lease agreements that we have in place. We will be bringing back resolutions to the board in terms of how we will handle all of those agencies going forward. If it is the will of the board for them to remain in the facility, then we will need to have some type of agreement that's currently, that, an agreement in place outlining who will be responsible for what. Currently, if there are improvements that need to be made at that facility, if I understand correctly, Connecting Henry has been responsible for purchasing the supplies necessary to make the improvements, but our facility's maintenance department actually does that. What this resolution will do is eliminate our facility's maintenance department from making any improvements to that facility until we have an agreement in place, as they will not, they're not operating under any current agreement at this time.
Okay, so that's question number one. Question number two, um, Connecting Henry is, falls under the family partnership?
Family Connections, Grant.
Connection, so this, uh, obviously we've gone back and forth with this. So what does this mean to the county when, um, again, you've got family connections and then you've got this, this proposal to go back, you know, as an independent agency? So what is your interpretation of all of that?
So it's my understanding, the reason Connecting Henry amended their bylaws is because Family Connections was made aware of the existing bylaws, which specifically stated that the Board of Commissioners made appointments to their board and that the appointment of their executive director was handled by the county manager. And I may be muddying it, so I may have to ask someone from Connecting Henry to come up. Um, but based on Family Connections reviewing the bylaws, they determined that there were, there's language in the bylaws that could, that could impact the grant funds that they were receiving. And again, I am going off of the information that was provided directly to the manager's office and the information that was provided to this board, um, a couple of weeks ago. So that's my very limited knowledge on what that means. Now, from a county perspective, um, we only served as the fiscal agent for that grant, meaning we were just the pass-through. Any expenditures, we were reimbursed through that grant as a result of Connecting Henry. Um, so we will no longer be the fiscal agent for, for that specific grant.
Okay.
And again, if I've muddied it, please feel free to invite individuals up from Connecting Henry who may can provide some clarification.
Commissioner Clemens going in.
I would just say, Chair, you're right on it with Family Connections. First of all, um, um, have you seen, Cherry, the grant proposals that were submitted to Family Connections uh, with the county as fiscal agents or the responsibility of counties with the funds that they've been receiving?
No ma'am, I have not.
So I want you to do your research on Family Connections, I'm very familiar with the organization. And it's, uh, and the county has served as a conduit, um, for Connecting Henry with, uh, Family Connections. But I wanna know when the cycle will end for the grant cycle that they're already in, where we are the fiscal agent, because this is a premature resolution that's being brought to us when we're already, uh, serving as a trust company for whatever grants they're under as fiscal agents. And we can explain, I can explain more to you what I mean by that, but I don't, who asked you to bring this resolution?
Well, we are currently not the fiscal agent and that's why it may be important for Connecting Henry to come forward because it's my understanding, we approved a resolution maybe two months ago, maybe two or three months ago. And at that time, I wasn't aware that a request had come through from Connecting Henry to have that agenda item removed completely because they no longer wanted Henry County to be the fiscal agent. So it's my understanding, that's already been changed where we are not the fiscal agent. But again, we have the entire Connecting Henry staff here that can come forward and explain that.
This is about the county, and so what I need is not an explanation by mouth, I wanna see the grant proposal that was submitted over the years where Henry County has been named in whatever relationship that it's been, okay? Um, and because the thing is, is that the, the Family Connections funds that are state funds go to counties and organizations, collaborations and partnerships to serve the constituents of that county. If we're not gonna partner with, uh, Connecting Henry, then we will go after those funds ourself. So I wanna, uh, be able to talk to, um, Monistat about how do we do that? And make sure that this is truly the way we need to go with this. Because, uh, uh, Henry, Connecting Henry has done a marvelous job. We cannot, not be a part of what Family Connections is providing for this county. And we cannot allow a private agency to do it without the collaboration of the county. So I think that this is, you know, we, there's so much that you gotta look at because you can't discontinue a relationship with funds that are already on the table with you being a part of that relationship.
So Commissioner Clemens, let me.
They're in the building, but are they paying rent in the building?
No ma'am.
Right, so how can you disconnect, um, a relationship and they're still gonna be in the building when you haven't done that part first?
And, and, and I hear you loud and clear. And I think the disconnect is that their bylaws have been amended that no longer gives you all the authority to appoint board members to their board. They no longer want the county to be a fiscal agent.
But when the money comes in from Family Connections, where does the check go, David? Okay, let me say, I know this area, okay? Family Connections, the state agency is giving the money to Henry County, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so right now, there's a whole lot that we need to discuss, that we need to get information on before we can disconnect. And they can change the bylaws, but that money will continue to come to this county as long as that fit, that, um, agreement and that contract is in place. Now, if someone has changed and told Families Connections to not send the money to Henry County, then there's a whole nother issue.
Okay, um, I have a question, I mean, any other questions, um, before we, because I think it'd be good to have a representative from Connecting Henry. But, okay, so I'm a little, this is cause of other questions. So how were the bylaws being able to be changed without the county manager's oversight or input under the current agreement that we have with Connecting Henry? That, that part is a little confusing to me now because it seems like there should definitely been some joint conversation. So can, I don't know, I don't know who's gonna answer that, I'm looking to Patrick from, you know.
I tell you, the, the bylaws gave the director's authority to change the bylaws. So should there have been conversation? Probably so. Was it, was it required by the by, bylaws? Not necessarily.
So, so just for clarification, um, in December, when I was made aware of the changes being made, I believe it was December, um, the changes to the bylaws, I think the changes had already been made at that point. Um, I did reach out to the county attorney and ask, hey, are we, what, what's the, what does the conversation need to be? Can they change their bylaws? And I think at that time, he told me, hey, they're a board and they have the authority to make those changes. At this point, the bylaws have been changed. And so the only reason this resolution is coming forth to the board is because there's no jurisdiction over Connecting Henry based on the changes to their bylaws. Now, I, I, I don't disagree in terms of understanding and I've had some conversations, um, prior to this meeting regarding the roles, the responsibilities, the scope, the purpose of Connecting Henry. And those questions were raised prior to the bylaws being amended. As a result of those questions being raised, there were changes made to the bylaws. But to say that I was aware that the changes were going to occur prior to them occurring, that did not happen.
Okay. And again, the bylaws and our responsibility to receiving funds from a state agency called Family Connections and that money coming into the county and us being, we are the fiscal agent. So you cannot be the fiscal agent and receive the money from the state. So if the state is sending us the money, then there is a relationship and we have been named in some form in that proposal. So we need to see the copy of the proposal so that, before we make a decision. And, and Patrick, you can intervene with that, but I know that when you write the Family Connections proposals, they look for the partnerships, they look for each partner, what are they going to be doing? And I'm almost certain that Henry County may have been listed because when I, when I contacted Family Connections and I said, hey, there's dollars that the state has allocated for certain counties to be able to get these dollars because I wanted to find out why Henry County wasn't doing it. Their response to me was, Henry County is getting the money. Henry County is getting the money through Family, through, um, Family, through, um, what is it, Henry Connections. So there are some funds that are set aside for counties to be able to do exactly what Connecting Henry is doing. So we want to make sure that that continues and then it continues for the constituents of this county. Now, it can continue with them, but the county needs to be a part of that. If the county's not gonna be a part of that, then the county needs to go after those funds for themselves and be a part of that. And so I don't think that we can disconnect ourselves without knowing what is the agreement, what's in the proposal, what is the cycle of these funds that are already out there? When do they end? When are they gonna apply again and take us off of that? Also in that proposal is in-kind donations, that building that the county put in there is listed. So there's a lot that goes into it and so we've gotta look at that. No, we may not be giving dollars, but we are giving dollars that are counted as dollars when you look at the rent on the building, when you look at the utilities, when you look at the maintenance. So Henry County does have skin in the game. It may not be cash, but it's in-kind donations that's counted in that proposal. The proposal's public record, so if they don't get it, then request it. And then we can talk about, and we can make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing as fiduciary people for this county to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And I think this is a premature, um, resolution coming before us without us having all the facts about the fiscal cycle. Why were we listed to the state as a fiscal agent? Why is the money coming into the county? And how do we apply for the money to make sure that the county continues to have oversight of state funds that's coming to this county to serve our constituents?
Okay, are there any questions or other comments from the board? And we'll invite a representative up from Connecting Henry to, to actually make a statement if you desire to do so.
Hey, good afternoon, I'm Doty Kason and I'm the Board Chair for Connecting Henry. And I have Barbara Coleman with me, she's our Executive Director. Um, you may recall me speaking, um, about a month ago or a couple of weeks ago at the, um, meeting in regards to the changes that took place in our bylaws. Um, we were notified in December, um, that we weren't in compliance with, um, Georgia Family Connection and that we needed to make immediate changes because our bylaws intertwined a governing body into our organization. And so because of that, we had to react pretty quickly and it was within just a few days of Christmas. So unfortunately, we didn't have the time to have dialogue between the county manager with any of you at that time, we just had to react. Um, our representative with Georgia Family Connection actually come out and met with us. Um, she brought with us the, the, I guess, rules as far as what a fiscal agent, um, Henry County, um, what their responsibilities were and said that things just weren't falling in line. So we do have those rules that we can provide to you, um, in regards to that. I don't have them today, but we can get that out for you. Um, as far as the term of the fiscal agent, um, Henry County is set to continue that relationship until June, um, till this fiscal year ends. And then it's the following year that we retracted or rescinded, um, the agreement on that. And we were advised by our representative with Georgia Family Connection that the majority of organizations like ours, that they were their own fiscal agent and she recommended us moving into that direction.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. Um, I want us, I want all of us to understand that it's not Connecting Henry's intention to deliberately hide something or be underhanded, that was not the case at all. But understanding that Connecting Henry is a nonprofit organization that's recognized by the IRS, is recognized by the Secretary of State of Georgia. And the way our bylaws had been rewritten in twenty fifteen basically gave another organization the authority over our Board of Directors. And as a nonprofit organization, we could not operate in such a manner, which is why with the direction of Family Connection that we were forced to change our bylaws. With the commissioners appointing people, we still have people on our board that you've appointed that we love dearly. They have been very helpful with us with going forward with the organization. But with appointment, sometimes those appointments may not be in line with what we need. If we need someone for strategic planning, if we need someone for fundraising, we don't have the availability to appoint who we need to appoint because the person that was appointed may not be what we need at that time. So it was necessary for Connecting Henry to take control of Connecting Henry. It was not a slight against the county, not a slight against the county manager or anything of that nature, but for us to continue to operate and to go forward even better than we've done in the past. We want to remain partners with Connect, with, uh, the county. We cannot do what we do without that partnership. We are a nonprofit organization with a very limited budget. And as you've already said, we're not in the general fund. We pay our own utilities. What you do provide, we greatly appreciate. We cannot pick our students up without your van. If we want, if you want, give us the van, we'll buy it for a dollar. But we cannot do what we do without your support. We do not have a building, we serve all of Henry County. That's every commission district, we serve every citizen that we can within this county. And we need your support and we want that partnership. But please understand, this was not something that we did lightly, it was not any malice in our heart. There was no, nothing of that nature. We want to continue to serve the residents of Henry County, we want to partner with you. We need that partnership and we welcome that partnership.
Okay, I have one question. Well, first of all, um, Connecting Henry is a necessity, no doubt, uh, or the services, I should say, that have been provided because we are in a growing need. Um, we even heard that we're gonna be in the process of the Community Development Block Grant. I would like you to talk about how you're gonna partner with that, even under your proposed bylaw changes. Uh, but I, I tell you, the thing that I don't want to have happen in this whole process is to focus on our citizens. Um, you know, whether, you know, the structure looks the way it is. But I agree with you, there's got to be some level of partnership and the way this is coming across, you know, it just, I don't know, it's just kinda setting for some of us, um, as we're, um, sitting here and we're all concerned about our citizens. But talk to us about how you are planning to partner with the county under this bylaw process and change. And, and, and again, we've got the Community Development Block Grant that, you know, ties into all of that. into all of that. I, I just need to understand more about, about what you're recommending, so.
Um, so I'll address as far as partner with the county and I'll let you address the block grant. But, um, I came in as Chair in September of 2019. And in doing that, in the past, I guess, as a board member, just kind of lackadaisical, just sitting back if there was a need, you know, jumping in and helping with that, but not really digging in and understanding how the organization worked. And so under my leadership, it's been very important for me to find out the inner workings and how everything falls into place. And then, of course, having a new executive director, her digging in, trying to figure out, well, what is her role? What is important? What does she need to do? And so we've really worked hard to strengthen our board, um, so that we can create a strategic plan and then really look at what is our role in the community and what are we trying to accomplish? And we want to grow on what we've been doing. I mean, we've made a huge impact on the things that we've done, but we want to extend that reach, um, further and wider to what we can impact. And we hope to be able to partner with each one of you and hear, well, what's going on in the different districts? Because y'all are gonna know the needs that are across the county so that we can extend that reach. And I mean, I'm open to, to any type of meeting to sit down and hear what are those needs so that we can build our strategic plan around that. So certainly, it, it was a quick decision. It was not in, in my desire to change, um, to change the bylaws that quick. But I mean, we felt like we were almost pushed when we sat down and we spoke with the Georgia Family Connection. So it was kinda like putting the cart before the horse in that relationship there, but I mean, we felt like we needed to do that. But I mean, we certainly want to partner, hear each one of y'all's feedback and your needs and continue to grow on that. Um, I felt like in digging in and learning about the organization that there's a disconnect between the commissioners. And so Barbara and I have talked about different ways to partner, maybe bring y'all in to show you what we're doing so that you have a better understanding of what's going on within the organization. We're looking to create, um, regulations or, or outline a guide in regards to the SWAG program, the GED program for the students, um, as well as for our benevolence program so that y'all have a better understanding of how those individuals with needs can connect into those programs. So outlining that so that you have a resource. We're hopefully gonna have a resource guide prepared in the near, near future so that y'all know all of the organizations and we can work for that collaborative to connect the organizations together here, um, so that you know of all the resources. So, yeah, we most definitely want to continue that relationship and work with each of you.
Well, well, I'll just say for myself, I appreciate you sharing that and I'm, you know, familiar, but not all knowing about all that Connecting Henry does to serve our citizens. But I sure would love to see more about the strategic plan before I could say that we are ready to, to kinda separate this, um, because it's such a, a grand need right now and I think the partnership has been good. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm still a little bit uncomfortable with what I'm hearing today. So, any other questions or comments?
Chair, can I, can I ask you a couple of questions? Because I think, I'm unclear about this. Some of you may be. What does the county provide to Connecting Henry? Not, not, not sort of the soft cooperation, but we provide them a building?
We provide a building.
Transit services? What else?
A van is provided and then any of the maintenance and operation. Now, I guess that's on the soft side. Um, but just the building, you all pay the utilities, correct?
Mm-hmm.
They pay, pay their own utilities, but everything else is provided by the county.
Salary benefits of anybody?
No, sir. Now, let me, let me go back because the previous executive director vested in the county's pension plan. And so that was under the previous executive director. With the revisions of, or at least in the resolution that I read for Resolution 1540, the board approved a resolution authorizing that said executive director to be the only one to vest in the county's pension and to be classified as a county employee. It even goes on to state that at the time that that employee retires or leaves that position, no other executive directors can be county employees. Now that, I didn't draft the resolution, but that is what was approved by the board.
So, Patrick, see, that's, that's the issue. So we got so much, and this has nothing to do with you all, and I think you're doing a great job, but there's some things that we need to clear up from a government agency of what is right, what we should be doing, what we shouldn't be doing. Because that's been an issue the whole time. If, if Connecting Henry is a private nonprofit entity that so many people have in the county and you allow the executive director of a private nonprofit business to invest in the county's pension, and then you come back and you say they're not a part of it, I just don't know how that, how that works. And if that pension is, was illegal, legal done or not? I mean, it's just so much that we gotta go back and have our attorney to look at.
Well, I, I just-
And I know that we did, and you don't have to answer it now because we don't need to make wrong right. We don't, we don't need to try to make wrong right. Um, I think we just got a lot of work to do to get to what we need. Um, and when we talk about the, um, what we provide from them, also all of their staff gets to use the county clinic. So that is still stuff that, and that's, and we're talking about a nonprofit agency, so do we do that for all nonprofit agencies that, that are in the counties? Or any county agency that has a partnership with the county? Do their employees also get to use the county clinic? We've gotta be consistent with what we do.
So their employees are able to use the clinic because there is a resolution which created Connecting Henry as a nonprofit to be classified as a county department?
Yes.
So that is the, that's why that's in place.
The reason we put them as a county department is because we were receiving the funds as a fiscal agent. So there's, there's just a lot that we need to clarify and I don't know that we can do it all here now, but we need to figure it out. And also the CDBG funds, this question is for, um, Shannon. Are the CDBG funds that Connecting Henry, uh, receive, were, have they received those funds on a competitive basis like all other nonprofits, or were they given the funds as a county department?
Yes, ma'am. Both times. This is only the second time that Connecting Henry has been awarded funds. And each time that they have been, they have applied on the competitive basis for the public service award.
As a, as, because the county departments can also receive those funds?
Yes, ma'am. County departments can. However, Connecting Henry, representatives from Connecting Henry participated and attended the mandatory workshops and completed applications for submission.
And so also see if that application listed the county as a fiscal agent or how the partnership with the county is, as well. Because we just need to be in compliance. When, once we end it and stop it, we need to make sure that we're, uh, congruent with the fiscal cycle of the federal funds and state funds that are being allocated to the department.
For, so for the Community Development Block Grant purposes, the county would not have been an agent.
Right.
The county is-
Or partner.
I'm sorry?
Partner.
The county is the grantor.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we've had some discussions now and so, um, the, the resolution that's on the table is to rescind Resolution 1540. So the floor is now open for a motion. Again, Colin, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, there is no, uh, rescinding of that resolution.
So Chair, if I could move on and-
So now-
If I could make one comment. The, the cleanest way to deal with Henry, with Connecting Henry going forward would be after this fiscal agent relationship expires, to do exactly what Sherri's proposed, to, to sever those ties. But if we're gonna sever them, we need to sever them. And we can still provide them with a building under a lease agreement. We can still provide them with transit benefits under, or the transit service under, under a contract. Those could still be done. But the, this bit of having people that are kinda county employees and kinda not, that's, that's very problematic. Now, it's, it's problematic less from a legal standpoint than from a, it just doesn't make any sense standpoint. But going forward, it would be cleaner to either them to be all in or all out. The, this sort of straddling the line is just not going to work. And from what I heard, the, the general partnership towards a common goal can probably be achieved either way. What would be lost would be the benefits that we provide these county employees, access to the clinic and whatever other benefits they may get. But that, those benefits, I think, right now are, are a little bit problematic. The former executive director, we made that person an employee. That person was, for all practical purposes, our employee. So that, that seems fine to me. But this going forward bit is, is problematic. So I think it would be cleaner now whether, and now, what I can't speak to, because I don't know enough about the grants, but whether severing that tie today impacts those grants or not, I couldn't tell you. But if there's any risk that it does, then you wait until June and you resolve that risk. But we could dig into the grants and find out pretty easily.
And, and the whole point was trying to be proactive and not waiting until whenever this fiscal agent, and again, thank you, I did not realize it was June, um, that the actual fiscal agent goes away. Um, it wouldn't make sense for me to come to you all in April saying, this is what we need to do with all the questions that you all have. Now, I will have to get from Connecting Henry a copy of their grant package because I don't have that information that you're requesting Commissioner Clemens, um, in terms of the grant, the fiscal agent and that information. So they can provide that information. I don't mind them providing it directly to the entire board, um, since they'll have the information, rather than just giving it to me for me to send on to you all. But we, we absolutely need to figure out what it's going to be. Um, I, I think within the resolution, there's nowhere where it states that Henry County will no longer be a partner, collaborate, or do anything with the group. Um, it's just very clear that we have no official authority over Connecting Henry. And that is what I'm asking the board to either consider or to at least provide some guidance. Um, but it's further my understanding that as of December, when your bylaws were revised, it did change how Connecting Henry operates. Whether this board approves it or not, the bylaws have been amended, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay. Well, we thank you. We've had a, a vote and discussion about it, so apparently we just need to get the information that was requested and, and come back, okay?
Thank you very much.
And thank you for being proactive in that matter. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Well, we'll now move to the public comment section and I'll look to the county clerk to identify, how many do we have today?
We have three people signed up for public comment today. Bill Tony, Robert Cole Peck, and Carl Swenson.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll enter into our public comment section and this is the time we allow citizens to voice their county-related items to the board of commissioners. And again, these are individuals that signed up prior to the board of commissioners meeting and each will be granted, um, a time of five minutes to speak. So again, we welcome you today. Thank you.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. I don't have any problem naming a, a highway or a park or anything else. We've got Richard Craig Park, Zach Hinton Parkway, Cap Welch Street. We have all these and I don't have a problem with them. What I do have a problem with, excuse me, is something that somebody donated to the city of McDonough that cost us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. I love my mom dearly, but I'm not gonna put a fountain to, to, in the, in the city. This is, this is the plaque. So when I went by that and I saw that, I thought, uh, it's some questions need to be So I turned in a freedom of information to the city of McDonough. I went by and I saw the mayor. Well, he, I asked him about it and he said, uh, what concern is it to you? I'm a taxpaying citizen. It was a good concern to me. And he said, it shouldn't be a concern. Well, anything, any dollar that y'all spend or they spend, it's a concern to me. So I did a little research. I've asked for that, freedom of information on all those questions, and I have not got a response back yet. They answered me back, but it's been two weeks and I haven't gotten anything. What I did find out was that we bought that lot that came out of foreclosure back to the bank. We paid $35,000 for the lot. We have county, I mean, city employees to take care of it. That's what it looks like. But we, we bought this thing for $35,000. We put sod in it, we bricked it, we put sidewalks in there, we put seats in there, we put water system in there, we put, uh, we got power going to it, we run the pump, we do all this work. And just to honor somebody's parents. And it was a lot that, that really they probably would have donated to the city and we paid 35 grand for it. So I go a little bit further. And, 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 um, we have a piece, the county owns this, it's a joint venture, I think, between the city and the county. If you'll look, that piece of property was bought for $100,000 an acre, which is $2.3 million. The front part of it, the guy kept the front part of it, the good money, the good property. And we got, that's Jonesboro Road. And we got the back part of the property, the junk part of the property, and we paid the guy $2.3 million for that. This is tax dollars. This is one that kinda surprised me. In the United States, we're being taxed to death. We're one of the highest property taxes in the United States. This is crazy. 2.61% of the average salary of anybody in this county goes to property taxes. It's beyond crazy. We're 547 of 1,340, I mean, 3,143 counties.
I'm sorry, your time is expired.
Okay.
It's actually going up or down five minutes, so thank you for your time today.
I thought you, I thought you gave me a lot of time.
No, sir. I'm not sure what's going on with our clock, but it should be counting down, so, but thank you, sir.
Chair, Board.
Good evening.
Uh, head numerous friends sent me a Facebook post from one of the commissioners. Um, after reading it, needless to say, I was very disappointed and offended that a commissioner would handle themselves on social media in that manner. It's appalling to be accused of stealing vandalism, trying to keep down a minority community. Commissioner even mentioned the movie Rosewood. None of the things that were said was of any truth. It's, I feel it's another example of kind of trying to suppress community involvement and public comment at commissioners meeting. I got involved in the, uh, community when, uh, that was the, that was the Facebook post. And you guys can read it, it's, uh, I white it out or I blacked out the person's name. Really like this video to go on, uh, the YouTube channel so we can get clarification of what, what's happened here. But when I started, my renters at 999 Fairview, which I own a, a house there, there was a dilapidated property next door. I went to the, um, code enforcement, they don't enforce it. I went to, uh, they told me to go to, uh, our county manager, went there and, and about 40 emails and there were three properties ended up being destroyed at that area. But this, if you look there, the valuation of the building was 114,200 in 2018 and 45,700 in 2019. That's one of the pictures of the property out from the road that I saw. I got closer. That's what the property looked like. I was told there was flood damage to this property and the other two. So there's three properties flood damaged, but you can clearly see by that picture, there's, there's no flood damage. Looks more like a roof that caved in. So there's another picture of roof caving in. So what ended up happening instead of, if we would have had a comprehensive plan to take care of these buildings, we could have probably took the, jacked those buildings up, took them out to a rural area and, and sold them and made some money instead of losing $114,000 of value. That's, that's the end result. We did a fire training. That was, glad we did a fire training. Another property that was involved is not even listed on county records anymore. 873 Fairview Road. And you ask, what did that look like before it was burned down? That's, that looks like- That looks like a pretty nice piece of property to me. And when I got involved last year in February, that's what I saw. So there's an accusation in that Facebook comment that people are, this person, me, is running around the county destroying stuff. This is how I found the county and how when I got involved with the county manager to help get stuff better. This is another property that was bulldozed again because of neglect. This is dilapidated structure at Hidden Valley Park. That's been repaired along with, that was the basketball courts that had been removed. I did, I was told at one of the meetings, go to C Click Fix. I've done it. I praise what we do on C Click Fix. But then you come back and it says, "We have no spots money for stuff." So this was a sewer that nothing was protected. It had a fence on it. I complained about the fence. On C Click Fix, they removed the fence. I asked something to be done. I was told, "Well, nothing can be done. We're going to do something future state." I asked to get some kind of protection around for our kids, our kids' safety. That was done. There's 100 acres at Hidden Valley and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do anything at Village Park or any other part of the area, but we have 100 acres at a park and we didn't take care of it. We had Cochran Park, which, you know, I was involved in getting that park reopened. We didn't spend any money there either. So I feel the post is more about, the person was upset that I, along with a couple other coaches, basically tried to get Cochran Park reopened. And I will always fight for our community. And it's very nice that the city of Stockbridge actually recognized myself and the other two coaches for the fight that we did to help get Cochran Park reopened. And my question to you, the board, all the board, is I feel that elected officials should handle this business that way. If you guys ever need me, you can call me on the phone, you can ask me something, I'd rather meet with you. But this type of behavior, they should be above that and I don't wish any citizen or constituent to ever be attacked like this again. That's all I got today. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. We're going to continue with the public comment, so we will continue, no, we're going to continue on with the public comment and then we can make comments. Yes, we...
We can address the...
Well, we can. Let's acknowledge the public comment section. That's what we've agreed to do. So let's...
Why are you agreeing this?
Okay, Commissioner Holmes, we're going to allow the public comment section to continue and then you can make comments afterwards. So please, thank you.
Go ahead, Ma'am. Go ahead, Ma'am. That's what they did say.
They should have.
Are, am I going to be allowed to speak?
You're welcome to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Oops. I guess they're going to have to figure out how to arrange this. I want to show this to you. This is an arbitration award that was won by one Phil Hudok and four other people. It is a document that cuts to the chase of what I'm dealing with right here. Each and every one of you have taken an oath to office to protect and defend the Constitution. Every one of you and every one of you have violated it today, today. And I wonder if this is something that you intend to do something about, change your ways maybe? Because we are entitled to, the people back here, the people that work here, we are entitled to a constitutional republic. You owe us that as public servants, which is what you are, okay? Not slaves, so don't go there. You are public servants. You work for us. You owe us a constitutional republic. You owe us obedience to the oath of office you took. If you cannot do this and you feel compelled to walk out on somebody telling you the truth, then maybe you don't need to be in the positions that you're in.
You don't have enough here for a quorum.
Yeah, you don't have enough in here for a quorum, so I don't know what I'm talking to anymore. This is not, this is not the Henry County Board of Commissioners. This is a fake organization because you do not stand up for the oath of office, the Constitution. You do not give us the constitutional republic. You allow our resources to go where? Oh, to a non-government organization. You're increasing the amount of funding, property, and everything being sent to who? Who? Oh, yeah. The Atlanta Regional Commission. The Atlanta Regional Commission. Do you realize, Ms. Wood, do you realize that by you being party to that, that is an act of sedition? Because it is not in any way a part of the constitutional republic that we live in. I brought this up to Tommy Smith. Tommy Smith recognized that and he backed away from the Atlanta Regional Commission. But you're still willing to give them money, time, effort? My goodness, you've given them the road on I-75 and what do we get for it? What do we get for it? We get to pay more of their people for research studies? We get to be Delphi'd? And some of you know what that means. It's a Delphi technique where they tell you one thing and when you agree to it, they go somewhere else and change it all around. Big surprise, okay? That's what you guys are doing to us. You have a budget. You're supposed to work within the budget. You don't work within the budget. There is no budget. You have a suggestion. You probably think the stop sign outside is a suggestion. Maybe the police think otherwise. But for you, for you, it's different. I understand. That's why people do this. That's why people go the distance. That's why they challenge the authorities that think they're authorities when it's the people that are the authority and always have been. We're just waiting for this to be brought on the floor of Congress and/or the Senate or an executive order from the President will work as well. Myself and about 30 other people were in Washington, D.C. this past week, putting it before all of the players, yes. And they were very receptive and they were very respectful, unlike some of these fake commissioners. I don't know how many times I have to say it, but I will say it for sure, they're fake. I don't know what they're in it for. And I was even going to compliment Bruce today. I really was on some of the work he's done. But when you start talking about my guns, when you start talking about all of the agencies, bureaus, corporations that are being created and then populated by your friends, we're lost. We're done. Get real with the people. Do.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes our public comment section. Okay, well, thank you and new Commissioner Holmes had some statements to make, so hopefully he'll make them at the appropriate time. So at this time now, we'll move into our approval of minutes for...
Chair, we no longer have a quorum, you don't have enough for a minute.
Okay, so anyway...
Unless somebody comes back, the meeting's effectively over.
Okay, well, let me just read through the announcements if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, listen.
Okay. So I do understand that we do not have a quorum and thank you for that clarification as well. But I did want to, at least, we know we cannot approve the minutes, but we do, are there any commissioner comments to be made or stated? Commissioner Barmen, then I've got a comment as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish my grandson happy birthday days. He's 13 today, so I'm going to wish happy birthday to Brady. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you. The comments that I have, one, I want to just continue to thank our public safety team in being diligent and staying ahead on the breast regarding the coronavirus. I know that that is still something that everyone is concerned about, so I want to say thank you for, again, the communications that you have there. The other thing, as we were giving some updates today, I could see some things lending to our legislative agenda that we need to begin preparing for. I know I heard something about opportunity zones and I know Commissioner Thomas has made mention of some form regarding annexation, so I don't know what that looks like. So that would be another item. And then again, anything that we need to kind of surround ourselves regarding our infrastructure. So the other thing I'd like to make a comment about, this did come up in the public comment, I just do want to educate our public about the Atlanta Regional Commission. Each county throughout the state of Georgia is required to participate in a metro planning organization. And this is where regional opportunities, whether it's Metro Atlanta or other areas or districts in the state, they have to participate in this plan to actually identify potential funding resources for state and federal funding. We do get, again, have to participate in that plan so that we do qualify for transportation funding, senior citizen funding, and other needs. So I just do want to educate our public about that as well. So those are my thoughts in that regards. So regarding the other agenda updates, we do have an upcoming meeting on March the 10th at 9 o'clock a.m. and that is a called Budget Workshop Meeting on March the 7th at 6:30 p.m. We have our regular Board of Commissioners meeting and on April the 7th at 9 o'clock, we have our regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, hearing by that we have no quorum, we can consider this meeting adjourned and thank you all for participating and those who are viewing in as well. Thank you all.